Okay, calling the Kahului Neighborhood Board February meeting to order. At the record state it is 6:02 PM. First point of business, we have the emergency responder monthly reports, we have the Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, Captain Danny Laurel. The question last month regarding the question was, does HFP assist the public with the setup of gas, propane, grills, or burns? Answer from our administration. Honolulu Fire Department recommends that the public contact the Way Gas Company store where the grill is currently being serviced. Honolulu Fire Department's mission is to provide immediate safety, give clear awareness, and responding. Statistics for the month of January, January. We had four activated fire alarms with no fire. We responded to forty-eight medical calls, four automobile collisions. Is it? Fire safety tip of mind is about power outage preparedness. There are few ways you and your family can be prepared for power. Prepare your supplies, ensure your flashlights, radios, etc., contain batteries at a time. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Are your family, checking with family members, if anyone relies on medical devices requiring power, ensure you plan ahead. Are your food and water, set your fridge and freezer to the full descent. You can close as much as possible during an outage, load the water containers for drinking and other needs. Check your electronics, load unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from ours. Never touch down hard, but assume lions are energized and dangerous. More safety tips is at Honolulu.com/ev. Learn more about power outages, findelectric.gov/odds. Any questions?
Mahalo, any questions? Okay, John.
I'd like to relay a concern, I represent the area from Waioa Valley out to Kualua. And I've been getting a lot of calls because people know I'm on Neighborhood Board, concerns about burning Mauna. Michael and your staff knows the site, you've upped the South Fork of Waioa Valley Road all the way to the very end. I don't have the address, but it's the, it's a private property just above forty-eight dash four hundred. Waioa Valley Road, and it's a period, and so they are burning pallets and so on all the time. And especially this time of year, you get a little corner winds and the smoke just sits in the valley and that's generating a lot of calls. So I guess you guys could take a look at that, there's a bit of a history of that going on there, so.
Is this just rubbish burning or actually cooking up a slop?
It's a lot of it's rubbish burning, I don't know about cooking in the slop, but they don't have a burn permit. And the previous captain played, Madrona is well aware of this and has called the Department of Health, the air branch on it. So like if you folks could investigate that, you may get calls. Okay, yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, mahalo, thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, if we can get HFD, HFD. Call him, I'll give you one more question.
Sorry, just wanted to find out if we ever found out the cause of the fire behind here almost a year ago?
I was not aware of that question and I'm new to the area, so I'm sorry, I don't have any.
Mahalo. Okay, moving on, we have Honolulu Police Department, HPD. Online, oh yeah.
Good evening, I'm Officer Jared Atkins with the District Four Community Policing Team. We also have the Night Watch Commander Lieutenant Sanford Yee online. The stats for January twenty twenty-five are, there were three motor vehicle thefts in Kahului versus zero the previous month. There were three burglaries in January versus four the previous month. There were twelve thefts in January versus five the previous month. There were three car break-ins in January versus one the previous month. There were zero burglaries in January versus zero the previous month. And then to answer our, a concern from last month was about the homeless in the area of Hiakeaa Pier. I think Auntie Rocky was talking to us about that. So we went out, several citations were issued in the area for some of the vehicles that were expired. We found three encampments, all of them which are illegal. Two of them appeared to be active, one was appeared to be inactive, inactive. We will be scheduling a stored property ordinance operation in the area sometime in the near future to address those camps. And that's all I have. At this time, I can take any questions or concerns.
Any questions for HPD, Auntie Rocky?
First. Well, first of all, I'd like to say mahalo, but I also want to mention that just a few weeks ago, we had one of our relatives set up a trap, pig trap with a camera on it. Hopefully to get your camera, the, get your picture of the pigs that's going in the trap. But then he came down to a house and rushing in and said that somebody just took his camera and he had him on his camera, took him off the trap. But lately, you know, sometimes we hear gunshots in the back and it's getting closer to our house. These guys are getting, they're getting out of hand and there's more homeless. Seems like they invited everybody from every place else now to move in on the valley. So that's kind of spooky. I know you guys are working with Kaka Oehe, which is good, but understanding you be that we are, that to make you aware of this is what's happening in our neighborhood. Mahalo.
Thank you, Auntie Rocky, any other questions, John? Okay, Rick.
Thanks for all you do for our community. I have one quick question, I know there's something before the legislature or the council about these kids riding the motorcycles on one wheel. And, you know, it just irritates me because one wrong move and then they hit my car and then I'm responsible if they get seriously injured. So what should we do as citizenry in the meantime until legislation makes it illegal to do that?
So yeah, for that problem, the best thing to do is call nine one one. I know it's kind of hard at the time, officers are busy or they'll, they'll get to the area, these people would be gone. I can tell you, we have been doing operations specifically geared towards going after illegal off-road vehicles, which a lot of these electric bikes are classified as, they're classified as electric dirt bikes and the mopeds. So we've been doing operations specifically for the illegal mopeds, illegal electric bikes on the road. We have had some success at taking these bikes into evidence or towing them. So we are doing that and we will continue to do that in the Kahului area because I know that's a pretty big problem. But it's, I mean, it's so hard, there's only so many of us and there's so many of them on the road and everyone doesn't understand that. It's, it's illegal, it always has been, everyone thought, thinks it's legal to ride a lot of these electric dirt bikes, which what they are. So it's, it's, it's a big problem. We're trying to do what we can because when we do take the bikes, the word kind of spreads throughout the community that HPD is out there and they are taking these bikes. So we're, we're doing what we can, but it is a big problem and until some much stricter laws come out, it's, it's probably going to continue.
Mahalo, any other questions? Okay, thank you, HPD. Moving on to agenda number, agenda point number three, we have filling our vacancies on the board. We have a secretary position available, anyone nominate anybody for secretary? No one, any interest? Not yet? Yeah, sure. Okay, well, when you guys change your mind, you know. We still have the two vacancies for Sub District Six, so just try and get that word out, yeah. We did get a flyer voted out, so, you know, we'll take it upon ourselves to kind of get that spreading out. You know, we do have the, we have the elections coming up, but that's later in the agenda where we can get to that. So we'll leave that there, move on to agenda point number four, yes, city, state, federal reports, we have Mayor Rick Blangiardi's report. Regina cannot be with us tonight, so I'll be reading this aloud for everybody. So highlights and announcements from the mayor's newsletter are going to include hundreds. Attended the memorial service in Kaka Ako to honor Jeff Fayala, the Honolulu firefighter killed in the line of duty. Mayor Blangiardi and members of the mayor's cabinet are sworn into office, beginning a new four-year term. The new ninety-unit bill seven affordable housing development breaks ground in Makiki. Repairs begin on the seawall and walkway at Queen Surf in Waikiki near the Barefoot Beach Cafe. The city unveils a new Opala truck for the Leeward Oahu Parks and Beach Parks. And the February twenty twenty-five edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found online at HTTPS WWW eight dot Honolulu dot gov backslash mayor backslash newsletter. Moving on to that one, we got the registration for the twenty twenty-five Neighborhood Board elections. February twenty-first candidate and voter filing is the deadline, so I think we do only have, when I last checked, our vice chair signed up right now as a current member. But we do also have one more new community member looking to participate, but other than that, we only have two sign up right now, so just make sure to get on that. Oh, no, okay, good job, Uncle Ken. Right on, okay. Department issue follow-ups, yeah, so the trash pickup. One of the questions was, would the Department of Environmental Services be able to remove items that are dumped on the side of the road if community members do not want to drive out to Kahului or Laie since there will be no convenience center? ENV responded saying that they collect trash and or recyclables from the curbside area fronting homes twice a week. And it collects bulky, bulky items by appointment monthly. ENV does not collect waste that is dumped on the side of the road, not set out for collection in accordance with the appropriate schedule or appointment. Community members can deliver waste to the Laie Convenience Center located at five six dash zero two zero Komehameha Highway, seven days a week between seven AM and six PM. Or to the Kahului Transfer Station located at one hundred Kapoakori Road between ten AM and six PM Monday through Friday and between seven AM and six PM Saturday and Sunday. Any questions or comments regarding that, the trash pickup? We have like a request for California grass to be maintained, so the question was, can the grass on the ocean side heading to Hiakeaa Pier be trimmed? Department of Facility Maintenance responded saying the DFM's Division of Road Maintenance, Conneaway Base Yard cuts the grass along Conneaway Highway, heading toward the Hiakeaa Pier on December twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and January sixth, twenty twenty-five. The next scheduled date they will be in the area is mid-February pending manpower and weather conditions. And then we did have one last question about the Hiakeaa boat harbor to the Hia State Park, the Komehameha Highway, the walkthrough. The question was, can the board receive information on which outreach services have been notified to get updates? Member Kaluheva shared that the homeless encampment is growing. So DFM responded saying that DFM's Division of Road Maintenance Stored Property Branch would report the location, the number of encampments, and the individuals found to the city homeless coordinator. The outreach provider for this area, Hia, is IHS Region Four, Team Number Two. Any questions regarding the mayor's report? Anyone online, members online?
So, Aloha Chair, so it sounds like maybe our last meeting was the eighth and that's when the grass cutting in Hia Road. Did anybody notice whether that area got cut? I mean, I drive it every day, I just could, can't quite picture it, so hopefully it got done right around that same time, it's just a.
I think, I think we had community members saying that it did look all right, but we can double check, just make that note when we report back to the mayor.
Yeah, I'll double check too, but that wasn't me originally who said that, but anyway, it just, it was pretty close, so we appreciate the city and county's responsiveness before the ask, sorry.
Mahalo.
So actually, that question was really, if I'm not mistaken, I think that was the question I was asking. The city, I mean, the state has articulated more on the tractor, right, more up the side of the tractor. And, and, and I think they both are great out of base sharing by king intermediate. Why don't they use that tractor to cut their grass, because that grass just grows too fast. Hand by hand is not efficient, so that's what, that was my question, is what about sharing the use of that tractor?
Thanks for clarifying. Uncle John.
Okay, mahalo, you guys, so moving on to, sorry. Any community members, any questions for the mayor? Any community members online? Okay, moving on, we have Councilmember Kia Ina's office, we're gonna skip Councilmember Kia's Ina's, Kia Ina's office. She cannot be with us tonight, so, and she has nothing to report. Moving on to Councilmember Matt Wire's office.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Chelsea, I am the Communications Manager and Community Liaison for Councilmember Wire's office. This is my first time in person and I appreciate you having, having this available. I do have the monthly newsletter going around, I did want to highlight a couple of things. We did have Uncle John at our last full council meeting and he delivered the message of aloha for the January full council and that was just really meaningful. We really appreciated it, got lots of positivity and positive comments afterwards.
It's my only aloha shirt, dude.
You did great, it was awesome. Also, you'll see in the welcome message, there's something for us to just flag and monitor. So as we're approaching the twenty twenty-six budget season, we're monitoring the potential federal funding changes and we're working with administration to ensure budget resilience. As you might have heard, on the federal level, there have been some proposals to reduce federal grants and ultimately it does impact some local organizations that rely on the federal funding here. You know, for now, what we have heard is that they pulled back on those proposals, you know, they are going to be touching any cuts or to federal funding, but we want to remain vigilant and keep monitoring the situation. And so we just want to keep our office open, so if you are experiencing any impacts from federal policy or any funding changes, council member just welcomes input, feedback, and just sharing if you are experiencing any difficulty. Some legislative updates, Bill fifteen was introduced, Councilmember Wire co-introduced it with Chair Waters, and it seeks to create a cesspool conversion grant program, which would utilize the newly created climate resiliency fund. And so what this helps is lessen the burden on families with household incomes under a hundred thousand dollars and they could qualify up to fifty thousand to convert their cesspools. We know that the state has their really big goal of getting folks onto septic tanks or just off of cesspools in general. So that was something that council member wanted to take into consideration as far as helping the financial burden. Alrighty, in some good news, Resolution twenty-five dash oh three passed unanimously at the council and that one was related to the landfill and not, and just reaffirming council policy that had already existed that landfill should not be located above our drinking water sources. And so really glad that, that had passed unanimously. So what we're, what our office is doing now is just monitoring a lot of the state policies and state bills that are moving through the ledge. We know that House Bill nine six nine, that was the bill that Representative Sean Franklin had introduced. He, let's see, I think that bill was heard just yesterday on the eleventh and that had passed out of its House Committee. That's moving along. Let's see here, last legislative update, Bill sixty-four, council member had introduced this with Councilmember Cordero and this would establish a city down payment loan program that's independent from the state and federal one. And what this does is expand the eligibility criteria, so that way we can get some more families into the homes. And so that is something that you can also follow, or if you want to learn more about this city's current program, you can see that on the link below. I apologize if you didn't get the flyer, I'll be sure that this is available on council member's webpage. Sure, in the back it looks like. Okay, just some community updates from the last Neighborhood Board meeting, there was a lot of concerns that have been brought up to our office about a Bella Bond Foundation proposal. And so our, our office monitored the state's Legacy Land Conservation Commission and it does look like that they withdrew their application. So we're, we're relieved that happened, so we appreciate those who did share your concerns and reach out to our office. I know that we have a meeting scheduled and coming up about, about the ridge, so we're looking forward to that. Just as a plug for resource, there is Seen Water Natural Lands Program and it provides an opportunity for communities to sense their land, do a lot of great work in the community and so if you're interested or if you know anyone that's interested, you can see the link that's on the flyer or you can visit the QR code and scan it with your phone. And then the last community update that we do have, we know that there's been some community input to collaborate with the Coral Kingdom and wanting to place an EMS or EMS facility, having an ambulance there to address the needs of a gap in service for the area. And so I had reached out to the owner, I know that Dr. Ireland and HGSD is also in talks with them. And so I think we're really hopeful that we can move forward with the process there. Alrighty, that's all of the updates that I have for now, I'm happy to take questions, bring some back to the team. Thank you.
Mahalo, Chelsea, any questions for the office, yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Chelsea, I had a conversation with Laura Thieman today, Director of Parks Department. And this is an ongoing issue. If, if HPD is going to respond to concerns about homeless encampments or illegal activity and so on back in the park, they need to have one of those blue and white signs, right, that they put up that cites the ordinance. And from way back, we've been asking for those signs to be put out around Kahului Regional Park, especially the back area, because without that, HPD is not going to respond to calls. People are getting bitten by dogs, guys are raising a lot of fighting chickens back there in tents. There's a whole lot of activity going on back there that should not be happening and mostly it's happening because we're not there as park users. So two things, I think really upcoming out of that, one would be for Parks Department to delineate its boundaries throughout the whole park. All the way behind here, all the way up to where Kahului Park is, we were working on. And then also to, to really make a concerted effort to start clearing out all of the invasives that are growing there. Because back area of the park is just not usable, overgrown, so, yeah, it's on Teresa, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Uncle John, any other questions, Uncle Rick?
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but while it's really amicable about this bill that was introduced about the cesspools. This whole situation reminds me about this nineteen sixties vintage movie called The Bridge Over the River Kwai. Pretty soon, we're not understanding why we're doing what we do. And really, there needs to be a call for better technology to treat the wastewater and that sort of thing because just taking, just getting rid of a cesspool and replacing it with a septic tank and a beach field, really only taking the solids out of the wastewater, so to speak, and then that tainted liquid portion is still going in the ground. And I actually, we actually installed these systems and I asked an engineer the other day, I said, hey, you know, you guys are, where, where there's not enough room to put a absorption field, which is usually takes about twenty or twenty feet by thirty feet, where you have homes that are built right up to the property line, then they design what's called a seepage pit where you have to put these great big huge heavy concrete rings down and the engineer said, oh, well, you know, they designed it so it's twenty feet deep. Well, that's really dangerous to have workers be, you know, in, in that deep of a situation and, and to save the homeowner from having to spend such an exorbitant amount. One of those seepage pit systems costs about sixty thousand dollars to install. And so I asked the engineer, could you take that twenty feet and put two seepage pits so that they're not as deep? Oh, no, we really need to get that wastewater down. When he told me that, I said, you know, this is really no better than putting a landfill over the aquifer. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just a little bit smaller, but when you collectively add up all of these systems, you're poisoning ourselves. So anyway, I, you know, sorry to go on and on, but I think that there really needs to be a call for better technology to try to see what we could do to, to make these systems less expensive and provide the room for them to be installed. Mahalo.
Thanks, Uncle Rick. Okay, any other questions? Members online? Ian, go ahead.
Actually, mine just is a question actually for Rick, in, in reference to that, are septic systems still better than the cesspools that exist? And, you know, is the, the sinkhole just a giant cesspool that goes deeper? Is that what you're saying? I've got two questions, yeah.
Basically, what was explained to me by engineers is that the coliform bacteria that is found in raw sewage needs to be in a place where it can self-destruct within twenty-four hours. So that's why they put it in a septic tank, because the septic tank has two chambers. So what goes in usually takes about two days for it to go out and go into the, into the leaching field or something. But, so while you're only taking, really getting rid of the coliform pathogen, you have all the rest of the stuff. And really, what it takes is, we like to put those piping gravel systems because what was explained to me is that when you, when you have a system with lots of rock in it and the rock provides the surface area for microbes to attach to break, to further break down the suspended solids in the wastewater. So while they're going to these chambers, we're really not, not affecting that kind of treatment. So that's why I think we really, really need to take a look at methods. What was the second question, I'm sorry? Oh, you're muted.
You're muted, if you can unmute.
Sorry, the first question was if the septic system was better than a cesspool. The second question was, are these giant sinks just deeper cesspools? Is that what you're saying, so they don't go through any systems, they just go deeper?
They're just a deeper way of trying to discharge the wastewater. And really, really what you want to do in a, in a beaching field situation is you don't want it so deep that, because you want some of that water to come up through the soil and evaporate. So half of it is supposed to evaporate and then half of it goes down into the soil. So we're, we're kind of, we're kind of moving away from that original premise.
The premise of putting rocks at least and trying to get more breakdown before it goes into the soil. And yes, you're right.
All of my members, sorry Ian, I hate to interrupt, but I see that we have a representative from Department of Health on. John, did you want to interject there in the conversation? Thanks, John.
I'm John Nagato, Branch Chief at the Department of Health Waste Water Branch, thanks for having me. I was just here to kind of add, answer some questions about a later item, but I didn't mean to hijack your guys' conversations, very good. But if I could, I could kind of jump in, but I don't want to, you know, ruin your guys' agenda or anything, so just let me know.
John, if you want to just make a quick point, you can go ahead.
Sure, just to answer what I think Ian was asking, there is a big difference between a septic tank and a cesspool. So, so if we want to start with a cesspool, because it's the, there's no treatment, it's just a hole in the ground, a cylinder in the ground that takes raw sewage. And when we think of sewage, we think of fecal coliform is one of the, fecal coliform is one of the, the bacteria that you might find in your stomach that will end up in the wastewater system and then it can, it can harm you in the water stream. But we think of biochemical oxygen demand. Uh, but we think of biochemical oxygen demand, the amount of oxygen, you know, the wastewater will take up and it'll harm plants and animals. And then um we also think of to total suspended solids, you know, the amount of physical things you can see floating around. Um, when you get to a septic tank, um it's it's much better than a cesspool. You're looking at about a hundred and fifty milligrams per liter of both of those. Um, but yes, like like I think everybody's pointing out, you can give and go um a better treatment quality when and and just to kind of point out a a little terminology. You know, the word septic is what you think. Um, antiseptic is opposite of going septic, no oxygen. Um, so that's when you get like um cuts and and stuff, it goes septic, it it can get infected. Um, so that's what a septic tank is. There is no air or oxygen introduced, so you don't get oxidization, you're just getting physical separation. Um, when we go to what we call secondary treatment, you're introducing oxygen, and there's different ways of introducing oxygen into the water physical or through um air pumps and very fine bubble diffusers. Um, and that will lead you to a much, much uh higher quality effluent. So when we talk about septic being, if you just want to use numbers, a hundred and fifty milligrams, um you're getting down to thirty or less. So it's substantially a better quality. Um, and and that's kind of where I leave it. I can I can go on and on and on, but I I don't want to hijack your guys' conversations, so thank you.
Quick one, Uncle John, yeah.
Thank you. It really highlights how um the funding that's being offered for individuals and others to be able to switch over from cesspools to septic is worth doing. So thanks for highlighting that.
Thanks Ian, thanks John.
Just a real quick addition to that, I'm I'm concerned about um us focusing on just getting funding to to convert from one system to another. I think we need to know a lot more about the whole exactly what you were describing, John, and maybe we could get some kind of a community meeting. I say that because as I understand it, from Ahoi Manu to Waialhuli is is one of the um heaviest concentrations of cesspools on the entire island. And of course, we're feeding all of that into Kanihohe Bay, kids go paddling there, people crabbing there, people swimming in the in the ocean, so um I I'd like to see us maybe the neighborhood board sponsor um discussion just about septic systems. Sounds like an exciting topic.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Joe. I have a lot of hats on today. One of them, right now, it's Key Project. I just wanted to say that we have a partner with someone who's working with the EPA in order to do assessments for community septic, like community level septic, uh specifically uh over here on Wailepa and then up in the back of Ahoi Manu on Wailepula. Um, that project was paused, and then like a half an hour before this meeting, I got the email saying that they're back on. So um expect more to come from that and for both council member and the Department of Health, I expect you folks will eventually be looped into that, so um I would love to connect with you folks just to make sure that you're talking to the people doing the work. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any other questions? Community members in person? Community members online?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to add to
Oh, Kiony, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, um I just wanted to add uh an idea to what Council Member wires. Um, what she what she was talking about the landfills, and I just wanted to bring it up again where even with the landfill issue, like is there something being done about them looking for alternative options to getting rid of our waste? Um, the last meeting, I brought it up briefly, but um there's this company, Phoenix Carbon. They have a system that they take most hydrocarbons and organic material and they convert it into like um they cook it down, and the byproducts are basically like biodiesel and biochar, which can be used for farming and things like that, like not looking at using the same methods over and over and over, and then like getting to this point where now we're like, oh, well, we don't have much places to do this. And the one place we did have it was over our water source, like, you know, like really just starting to think outside of the norm already, because it hasn't been working, you know? Ever since I was a kid, man, I've seen landfills in operation and get shut down, you know, and then like it's happening and we live on an island in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, there's no more land. We we don't have, like, we we have to start kicking it, so I just wanted to throw that back out there again. Maybe you can take it back to council member and just look into stuff like that, like Phoenix Carbon. They have, they they have the technology to do stuff like this, so at least start it.
Kiony, we'll go ahead and make that note to the the council member's office.
Right on, thank you. That's all.
Auntie Rocky, if we can keep this quick, we do have a full agenda, you guys, yeah?
Yeah, I I I'm just gonna agree with John. Maybe we should have a separate meeting, maybe at school, to just discuss the facilities, the community facilities, cesspool, both the the landfills, because it's gonna, this can take up a whole meeting by itself. So I think we should make a, our propose that we make a a meeting separately just for that, or communities, community to discuss it. Because we all got cesspools all the way down. I had a cesspool too.
We'll take that note, we'll take that note from both members. Mahalo, thank you. Any other questions for Council Member Wires Office, in person, online, members, community? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we do have the Board of Water Supply is Barry Usagawa online. Okay, we'll go ahead and skip Board of Water Supply, moving on to uh Governor Josh Green's office. Uh, we have uh Katie online, Ms. Katie? Yeah, Katie's online.
Aloha, everyone. Uh, Katie Lambert, uh governor's representative, sharing governor's message from his newsletter, which should be um available in your drives. So he did deliver the third state of the state address last month, and he reaffirmed his commitment to priorities that will guide us in the year ahead, making Hawaii more affordable, addressing homelessness, reducing the cost of living, improving healthcare, supporting Maui's recovery, and tackling climate change. Looking forward, the admin- his administration will take bold innovative action on affordable housing and cost of living. With a goal to reduce the cost of living and provide more affordable housing options for everyone, we signed HB two four zero four, the largest tax cut for working families in the state's history, and we will continue working to make Hawaii a place where local families can live and thrive. For homelessness, by twenty twenty-six, we will complete thirty Kohale villages, offering more than fifteen hundred housing units for those experiencing homelessness. This effort will reduce homelessness by half and save millions for taxpayers. Healthcare access will secure funding to improve healthcare access, expand hospital capacity, and raise Medicare rates to ensure better care for five, excuse me, four hundred fifty thousand vulnerable residents. Public safety, we are committed to reducing illegal fireworks, combating gun violence, and ensuring safer safer neighborhoods for all. Climate action, we will act on science-based recommendations from the climate advisory team to protect Hawaii from the advancing climate crisis. Maui recovery, as Maui rebuilds from the August twenty twenty-three wildfires fought, excuse me, wildfires, we will continue to provide support and resources to accelerate recovery. While we've made progress, there is still much work to do. Too many families still struggle to find affordable housing, and too many people are homeless. But by standing together as one ohana, just as we have over the past two years, we'll build a Hawaii where our children and grandchildren can thrive. Let's continue working together toward a safer, healthier, and better Hawaii. Um, for follow-ups, uh John Nagato from DOH is here. He's already introduced himself, so he is here at the request of the board on the uh variance matter brought up by Board Member Masterson. Um, the other follow-up was with regard to parking at state buildings in particular. Um, I think there's still an issue with um at DLR, there's also, there has been issues at the Capitol. Um, so this information had been provided earlier, but just want to um provide it again. Um, so Dags um does manage all the parking facilities. Um, they do have a number to contact for Parking Control Office. The main number is eight oh eight five eight six zero three four three. Kupuna, who may need additional time, are encouraged to contact the Parking Control Office in advance to arrange longer parking times if necessary. Um, based on some of the comments from the last meeting, I understand that there's it, there's actually a lot of issues going on at the various state offices, so I would just encourage um people who have issues to contact um the Parking Control Office directly to let them know. I think um there was, um it's supposed to be four hours, but some parking garages only have two. Um, gates are closed, um so members have to walk around the building, so um if I will actually put this number also in the chat, since I'm online tonight and not in person, if that will help. Um, other than that, I don't have any follow-ups. I'm happy to take back any questions or comments and concerns to the governor.
Aloha, Katie, any questions? Members in person? Uncle Rick?
Please um extend a big mahalo to Department of Transportation Ed Sniffin. I think this roundabout is almost complete. Hopefully tonight they finish the last segment of paving, but I think people are really finding it useful, they're getting used to it, and I've had quite a number of um thumbs up on on its existence. Mahalo.
Thanks, Uncle Rick. Auntie Rocky?
Um, I would like to suggest that maybe a town hall meeting with the some representative from the governor's office also, because we have a lot of facilities in our area, like mismanaged, we have a lot of mismanaged facilities by the state, and it needs to be discussed. We have the boat, the boat harbor, which to me is it's it needs uh needs big help. And we should be treating it like the mainland have the, how they treat the lakes in the mainland. Ours is no comparison. Our state park needs to be discussed. The um DLR um, you said buildings, all of these facilities need to be discussed. And we can't discuss it in this meeting because it's going to take up too much time. So I suggest at a later time, sometime that I would ask the governor to send his representative to have a town hall meeting to discuss these matters. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Auntie Rocky. Uh, any other questions? Members in person? At the governor's office, members online, Kiony?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to um add on to what Uncle Rick was talking about, the roundabout. So from my understanding, the only issue that I have with the roundabout really now is that that circle in the middle. I I was, I thought that it wasn't supposed to be paved in like that, and the community was supposed to be able to like plant and stuff inside of there. I just wanted to ask about that and see like if something will be done about it, or if they're just going to leave it like that, and what we as the community can do about it to beautify it. Because right now, it's just, you know, it's just a concrete curb with a bunch of asphalt in it, and it's it could be so much more. That's all.
Mahalo, Katie, Uncle Rick?
So knowing that the state is woefully behind um and on being able to maintain public spaces in terms of grass and that kind of thing, but they have allowed us, we have assembled, Uncle John and I have assembled a group, all kinds of artists, and we are attempting to come up with some um nice art piece that will um reflect the this community, the gateway to the country, tarot growing, that kind of thing. So um whereas once before, when roundabouts were designed, they wanted a big feature in the middle so that you sort of as you approach the roundabout, you knew that something was there and you had to kind of slow down, but I think at this point, um the mantra is more that you need to be able to see what's coming at you and that kind of thing. So we're constrained a little in terms of putting something in that circle that obstructs the view of um oncoming traffic in both directions, but we're really going to attempt to come up with something tasteful and um artistic and um something that our community will be proud of. Mahalo.
All of you guys, yeah. Any other questions? Community members in person? Community members online? Jennifer Nakamura has a question, asking, can someone express to the governor that many residents are worried about Elon Musk? SpaceX trash debris forecasted to land in waters near or offshore Hawaiian islands. Hopefully, the governor is being all about that. Um, so Katie, if you could just take that question back to the governor's office and bring a response back next time we see you guys. Any other questions? Community members? Okay, moving on. Thank you, Katie. Um, we have Senator Brenton Awaz's office, we have Makona online.
Hello, Makona. Um, just a few updates for you folks. We got a um Senator Awaz was able to uh be present at the DLR meeting um to do with uh the Bella Bond being on the agenda as on uh Puma Elili. Um, as most of you are aware, uh the plans are not uh moving forward. And um Senator went a step further and met with Mario of Bella Bond and expressed the community uh does not support any action or activities on the land, um even if he were uh to purchase. Um, excited to have Cory Nago of EM Hawaii and uh uh Alawai Genki Project coming up in the community presentations um to give more insight on effective microorganisms as it benefits uh and the benefits to our water and environment. Uh, we felt like it was important to have you folks uh be informed, um and him to share insight with you folks. Um, as we will need more support to raise funds in the future, as we uh try to build uh collaborative efforts um to utilize effective microbes um for uh environment and um possible cesspool management. As most of you may be affected by Act one twenty-five uh that mandates all existing cesspools must be converted um by twenty fifty, um we thought that this was a great opportunity to get more educated on possible uh alter- alternative solutions, as we see the benefits of EM um working in the Alawai and, you know, possible solutions uh for our side of the um island as well. Speaking of water uh quality concerns, we have submitted a request to the city's Department of uh Facility Maintenance to get an assessment for the dredging of the sand and sludge uh near the Kalu uh Bridge and River Mouths. Um, which, you know, we we feel that uh could be a a big hazard, a flood hazard, if not addressed uh soon. Um, we'll keep you guys updated as soon as uh we get more information back from the department. Um, plans have been approved to do Aina Rest- plans by the city have been approved to do Aina Restoration Project at Kalu Beach Park. Uh, we're scheduled to start some work in early March. And finally, we got Bill two four two uh stopping foreigners from purchasing agli- agland by uh Senator Gabbard um passed in the first two committees, and it goes to ju- judiciary, which Senator Awaz on. Uh, we're very hopeful um that this bill has a good cha- chance of uh passing in the Senate. Open for any questions. Mahalo.
Any question for the Senator's office? Uncle Rick?
Sorry, got lots to cover. Um I mentioned to Senator one day when he was watering the ulu and and um and um mountain apple trees that um it was explained to me by by my dad way back when, why do we have to eat fish on Friday? And then he explained that fishermen had a hard time in Italy way back when, and so the Pope declared that everybody had to eat fish on Friday so that the fishermen could make a profit. So I mentioned to Senator, since you have this wonderful project and the trees are looking so good, why don't we do a really good thing for Hawaii by making Wednesday a day that we only employ any taro products or any ulu products? And it's just, it'd be wonderful, because it just, you, that that supports the growing. You cannot just only have farms to grow the product, you have to have ways to, you know. Okay, right, Auntie Rocky?
Mahalo, yeah, sounds good. We can get more information on um something like that. Mahalo.
Thanks, Uncle Rick. Uncle John?
Hi, Makona. I just, I want to uh uh put a reminder to the Senator that alongside the ulu tree, we really need a pathway, an all-weather pathway. Um, that was, uh, we've, Ian and I have talked about that, um don't want to lose track of that. Um, there are some ideas, you know, how to connect all the way from Baolu Regional Park, all the way up to Ahoi Manu Road, and maybe beyond too. So anyway, just wanted to put that in your ear.
Sounds good. I'll report that back.
Thanks, Uncle John. Any other questions from uh members in person? Members online?
Chair.
Yes.
Uh, this is Donald Sakamoto. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, uh, one second, Donald. We're going to check with the community members in person? Okay, yeah, go ahead, Donald.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, uh, thank you for Senator Awaz uh representative to give an update. My concern is coastal erosion uh with the climate change and King Tides and whatnot. Uh, I'm worried about the uh Kamia Highway going towards uh countryside and as well as the homes uh along the countryside, especially cesspools and whatnot. As the water goes underneath, it's going to push in. So are there any bills in this year's legislature to address climate change to help with the erosion, to prevent more erosion?
I know there's a few bills that are uh I be- I believe still alive.
I know there's a few bills that are uh I be- I believe still alive and I could probably get you more information, uh more detailed information. And also can get some updates from DOT on on some of their future master plans or projects.
Well, I appreciate that. I I I understand you have a La- Larry Magnati that works at your office.
Who was that?
Uh, La- La- Laurie?
Oh, yes, yes. She uh just came on uh uh to the Senate Minority Office, yes.
Okay, I know her through Agitoba's office at City Council, so I I I I can outreach to her at your folks' office. Thank you.
Sure, yes, definitely. Anytime.
Thanks Donald. Any other questions for community members online? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Uh, we have Rep Kita Gawa's office. We have Wendy online.
Hi everyone, um, couple of updates. Thank you to everyone who completed our survey. We'll be sending out a newsletter with the survey results early next month. It's also included, it would be included in our emails. Um, Rep did have a cesspool bill and it continues to move through the House. So thank you to anyone who submitted supportive testimony. Uh, lastly, Rep Kitagawa is on the Finance Committee and they'll be holding their hearings for finance starting next week. And she just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that you can watch all of the hearings, both House and Senate, in real time and recorded on YouTube. Um, so if you're interested in any issues or any hearings, even the floor sessions, um, they're all on YouTube, both the Senate channel and the House channel. Um, and that's it for now.
Mahalo Wendy, any questions for Wendy? Do we have a, can we get the House bill number, Wendy?
HB eight seven nine.
Eight seven nine, mahalo. Um, any questions from community members online?
Uh, Chair Sakamoto.
Don- Donald, one second. Um, Wendy, I have a question. Could uh the rep get us a list of uh proposed C I P projects for our district? Um, now that she's chair, it'd be um, it'd be awesome just to see what's what's on the table.
Um, that would come out in the H D one, but it wouldn't be finalized.
Oh yeah, for sure. If if we could just get like anything um that she plans to put on her newsletter as far as uh, you know, anything that is anticipated to um be inserted into the H D. This crossover happens by the time we get next meet, yeah? So yeah, if we can get that by the next meeting, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
Thanks Wendy. Uh, okay, uh, community members in person, questions? Donald, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Uh, thank you Wendy for your uh report. I just have concerns about e-bike uh bills going to the legislature. I testified for Bill fifty-two for the City Council, but waiting for the mayor's signature. But as a blind individual and other blind people a- around uh Oahu here in Honolulu, we have issues with uh e-bikes being so quiet. And when they pass us or come in front of us, we don't know where they are. There should be some kind of eliminated noise like how the uh electric vehicles and hybrids have now. But there's no regulation nationwide right now for uh United States to have this. So can that be possible to put the bill in with the state or we have to wait to federal regulations? That's my question.
Well, it would be too late to introduce a new bill um for this session. But you can always keep it, you can always keep it in mind for next session.
Okay, so maybe can testify in putting that in existing bill or cannot maybe?
Um, it would depend on the language of the bill.
Sorry Wendy, Uncle Donald, I'm just gonna interject Wendy that maybe Uncle Donald would be satisfied with a resolution since the deadline for resolutions have not passed yet. Um, if you could just take that to Rep Kitagawa's office. Is that satisfactory, Uncle Donald?
Yeah, I'll check into that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much Wendy. We're gonna move on.
Thanks you guys, okay. We got uh Weber Community College, Chancellor of Arts, Artist Online. Oh yeah, I think. Okay, we're gonna skip uh Weber Community College. We have the Kona Bay Regional Council, Uncle Cliff. Anything to report, Kona Bay Regional Council? I have a question. How often the? Okay, I have a question. What, how often does a Kona Bay Regional Council meet?
Actually, the meetings.
In the mic, Uncle, Uncle Cliff?
Yeah, at one point it was every other month.
Yeah.
And it was going, it was pretty good every month.
Yeah.
And then somehow, somewhere, it stretched out. Now, every other month.
Was it voted on by the by the council to change that to quarterly meetings?
Yeah, because most of the stuff come out now is.
Do you remember about when that happened?
Was that?
You don't remember about when that got changed to quarterly meetings? Cause it was month to month. Cause when I go onto the Kona Bay Regional Council, you can't meet meeting minutes for every month.
Like last month on?
Was recent.
We missed the whole program. I don't know.
And how did it been recent? Okay, I'll double check. Thank you. Auntie Rocky?
It used to be quarterly, but if we have important issues that need to be discussed, they they can move it on to, it depends on the board. Um, they can move it on month to month, but now it's like every other month. And the next meeting is on February eighteenth. And um for your information also that tomorrow, there's a um, there's a Makai Watch at the Heike Pier at nine o'clock. So in con- in conjunction with the Kona Bay Regional Council, we usually go and attend that also. So the community wants to be involved with that, you know, the Heike Pier, and they usually have the meetings. Nine o'clock. And then also, I think um most of the board right now, the the Kona Bay Regional Council, their term is up. So I think even our Kahaloo Neighborhood Board, we gotta get someone to go. And the more wacky, uh, I think Kani Oe two was on the board before. I think he's, I I need to go back on. Cause you only can serve so 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 many years on the board and you gotta go off and if you wanna go back on, you can go back on. Sorry, goes. Pardon me? Ah, yes, what you do is, we actually, we recommend the recommendation to the governor's office. But that our board has to make a re- recommendation, Kahaloo Neighborhood Board, uh to the governor. And the governor recommends that the name to the legislature and it goes before the senate for approval. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Tiroki. Any other questions?
Real quick.
Mine?
Um, the, what's the status? Thank you. What's the status of the um Kona Bay Regional Plan that was being revised and updated? Was that completed? Can I ask Cliff or Auntie Rocky, Uncle Cliff?
I don't. Right now we're going pig. As far as I know, there's a permitted interaction group that's working on it. Um, the last thing that I saw was uh an update from twenty-ten, but I know that the, it should be updated. Um, uh, and I I know that a quorum is a struggling thing for that uh council. Um, but yeah, we're working on it. And I know that that's that's being worked on. So as long as we can um, you know, stay diligent on that because it, we are, we are outlined in the statute in the creation of a council, yeah, the neighborhood board itself, so. Um, yeah, we'll just stay on top of that and then we can get any updates on the master plan back to B U N.
Oh gosh, I'm so sorry. I actually meant from the Kona Bay Regional Council.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, that was what you were talking about. Okay, just to ma- making sure. Okay, thank you Chair.
No worries. Yeah, we can. Auntie Rocky, anything?
I was just gonna say, to me, it's an important board.
Yeah.
Because I think we're the only bay in the whole state that that we have our own authority.
Yep.
With the board.
Mm-hmm.
Mahalo.
So that'll be on our agenda.
Yeah, we can go ahead and put that on the next agenda, just to double check. Um, yeah, because we're not the only neighborhood board that's involved in that. Yeah, there's another neighborhood board, there's state reps. Um, and then it's basically Brian. Yeah, so I mean, if we can request Brian, come down, that'd be great.
There's only two neighborhood boards with Kona Bay, it's the Kani Oe and the Kahaloo.
Yeah.
Is Oahu still on?
Oahu's still on there. We're filling a seat, should be filling on this next meeting. Um, okay, we'll park that there. Any other questions, community members in person, online, Kona Bay Regional Council?
I just had, um, yeah, yeah, um, I just wanted to ask Auntie Rocky, the meeting has appeared, nine AM or nine PM? Just making sure. Might be silly.
AM.
AM.
AM, bright and early.
Yeah, yeah, we're out of there. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Uh, we got uh Rep Takuta's office. Emily, online?
Aloha Chair and members of the board. Um, so Congresswoman Takuta is back in DC now. She was recently named the ranking member of the House Agriculture Committee's um Subcommittee on Conservation, Research and Biotechnology. In this role, she will be the lead Democrat for Resource Conservation and Agriculture Research. Um, a court has temporarily blocked um President Trump's order to block disbursements of federal grants and loans. Um, and the Congresswoman will continue to do everything in her power to protect funding and programs that, you know, Hawaii and our communities rely on. Um, Congresswoman Takuta recently sent a letter to the US Office of Personnel Management requesting answers about the deferred resignation offer that federal employees received. Um, she would like to hear answers soon. Uh, on some other updates, when the Congresswoman is back in town next week, um, she will be hosting a town hall in Wahiawa at the Wahiawa Elementary School Thursday, February twenty, from seven PM to eight PM. She will also be hosting a town hall in the Big Island in Pahoa um from ten thirty AM to eleven thirty AM. Uh, Congresswoman Takuta recently announced her nomination of thirty-one students from Hawaii to the US Service Academies for the class of twenty twenty-nine. And she also wanted to announce that we will soon be accepting submissions for the twenty twenty-five Congressional Art Competition. Um, more details will be posted on her website. Thank you, and I can take any questions.
Any questions for Rep Takuta's office? Yeah.
I'd like to thank Jill for all of her hard work that she's doing, especially right now with a lot of the cuts and stuff. And I know she's fighting for us, for our our state, and I commend her for that and give her our Pandes Aloha's. Good luck with that. We pull you prayer.
Thank you.
Thanks Auntie Rocky. Any other questions, comments, members in person, online? Community members in person, online. Okay, seeing none. Mahalo. Have a good night. Senator Aloha to the rep. Um, Auntie Christie, Kalu Hiva with Kona Marine Corps Base.
Hi, good evening Chair, members of the board and our community. Um, tonight we wanted to share with you the completion of our um Range Compatibility Use Study. And tonight we have with us the organization who did this study. And I'd like to introduce Jeff Oleander, who is the Senior Leader of the Organization Centec and his team, who did a great job. Um, this information is also on our website and Jeff will share a little bit more. We have information for you folks to take away. We are going to be taking, as you read through it, over the next um however long you want to take. If for the next six months you have questions, that's what we're here for. And Jeff will also continue that information. So if I can't answer it, then Jeff will be able to assist us. Let me introduce you, Jeff Oleander.
Hi, my name is Jeff Oleander. Uh, very happy to be here and I thank you for having us. Um, it's a real simple message tonight is that this study has been completed. The purpose of the program is to take a look at things like noise and safety as they affect training activities that Marine Corps and whether those things affect people on the base or in surrounding communities. So uh the studies are completed, they are posted. Uh, we have some little brochures that you can take home with you tonight to have a QR code on the inside. Or you can go directly to those documents available. So they're they're not uh super short, so it'll maybe take some time to go through. There's a lot of information. Uh, the idea is gonna be if you have a chance to read it and ask questions, the Marine Corps contributions like this or whether it's on a different page. Uh, but the idea is to document things that as they're happening now, especially during training activities. This is a change, but it's a documentation of what's happening. Um, and then sharing that information with the communities that are, it's uh speed of sharing information and booking up. So um I guess I'll probably put them up here by the way I grab one of these, just got that QR code and take a look. Should probably be the start of dialing. Thank you for your attention.
Uh, any questions for Marine Corps Base, Auntie Christie? Any members online? Any community members online? Oh, yeah, Uncle Ken?
Yeah, can we get an email uh with that as an attachment?
Yes, I can send that.
Sure, yeah, we can get that sent out. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? For the Marine Corps Base. Auntie Christie, you have anything else?
I know, just to wanna reiterate um that as you go through this, please feel free, quick QR code and email me any questions. And again, that's, this is our support team that are gonna be able to, you know, make clear those questions.
Mahalo. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item. We have community presentations. Um, first up is gonna be E M Hawaii Genki Ball Project, Cory Nagle. We have her online. Um, I do wanna just make note before we go into this next part of the agenda. Yeah, we're gonna um, we're gonna limit these to seven minutes each. I know it does say on the agenda ten. Um, but just due to the hefty board business that we do need to take care of, we're gonna limit this to seven minutes each, just so um we can get through everything tonight and get everyone home safe one time. So uh Cory, if you wanna go ahead?
Okay, right on. Thank you so much. Uh, keep this next in short. Respect everybody's time. Can everybody hear me? All right? Uh, do we have some visuals as well uh for my talk? If not, uh all good, um, I'm, I can, I can just talk, but um, can we confirm if we have any visuals?
Yeah, give us one sec. Uh, we're just pulling up over the screen.
Okay, right on. Mahalo. All right, so I I just, while they're pulling that up, uh just a quick introduction. Uh, hello everyone, you know, thank you for taking the time to attend this community meeting. Uh, my name is Cory Nagle. I'm a local boy, raised in the Lilyha Kapalama area my whole life. Uh, I'm a Saint Louis grand, uh don't hold that against me. I ended up going to uh UC Riverside. I graduated with a degree in media and culture studies. I was in the hospitality industry for a while, but uh currently with the company E M Hawaii. And I am also a volunteer member of the Genki Alawai Project. And today I'm just excited to share with you how we can regenerate Hawaii with effective microorganisms. And you know, special shout out to Senator Alva and Makana for the opportunity for me to share with you all tonight. So.
Well, mahalo. Give us one second, Makana. I'm sorry, um.
Right on.
Not Makana. Cory, give us one second Cory. Um, we're just pulling, uh trying to figure out your screen.
Okay, all good, all good.
Cory, yeah, you can go ahead and just uh proceed with your presentation while we pull up the visuals.
Yeah, for sure. I wanna be respectful of everybody's time, but on the first, I'm just gonna start off with what microorganisms are, you know, why they are important. Uh, for those of you who don't know what microbes are, they're these tiny creatures that we cannot see with our eyes, just like the name suggests, they're microscopic. And they're everywhere. They're in the air, they're in the soil, they're in the water, and they're in our bodies, right? So they say that one teaspoon of soil can contain billions and billions of microbes. So you can just imagine throughout our body, there's trillions of microbes in our bodies and the environment. So we have more microorganisms in our bodies than we do actually cells themselves, right? So microorganisms, they are at the bottom of the ecological food pyramid. In other words, they are the foundation of all of life on this planet. Right? If we don't have any microbes, we won't have any life. So this gets me to uh the effective microorganisms, otherwise known as E M, right? So what does E M stand for? Uh, just like the title suggests, E M stands for Effective Microorganisms. It was developed in Okinawa, Japan by Dr. Teru Higa, who you see pictured over there, over forty years ago. It is used all over the world. It is safe, it's simple, it's economical, and more importantly, it's effective. So out of the countless strains of microorganisms that we have in the world, uh Dr. Higa was able to distill uh down to three main strains of microorganisms. Uh, a lot of you are familiar with this, that we use up almost on a daily basis. The first is lactic acid bacteria. This is mostly used for making pickles, making yogurts, making cheese. Uh, the second bacteria is yeast, right? This is another fermentative bacteria, known for making bread, for making beer. And finally, we have something called phototrophic bacteria. And basically what this bacteria does is it can photosynthesize, right? Just like how plants can make energy from light, bacteria can do the same thing. So E M is a combination of these three specific strains of microbes. It's in a liquid form. And it has many uses, uh originated in. and it has many uses, uh, originated in agriculture, but can be used for bio remediation as well. So, next slide, next slide, please. So some of you may have uh, heard about the Genki A'loai Project. This is a one form of bio remediation that we're doing. Uh, for those of you who aren't familiar with what bio remediation means, if you break up the word bio, means life, remediation means to clean up. So in this case, we're using live microorganisms to do the work for us, to restore the environment. So, what's pollution for us? Is food for the microorganisms, and we're basically bringing back the ecosystem from the bottom up, right? Like I mentioned, microbes are the foundation, they're at the bottom of the ecological pyramid. If you don't have a solid foundation, all of life will collapse. So we're bringing back the ecosystem from the bottom up, starting at the microbial level. So, through the Genki A'loai Project, you know, not only are we bringing uh, environmental healing and restoration, regeneration, we're also bringing the community together. You know, through this project, we were able to collaborate with over forty schools, um, local and from the mainland. We've engaged with over a hundred companies and organizations throughout, and this is all done on a volunteer donation basis. We are actually part of a bigger nonprofit called the Hawaii Exemplary State, who was waiting for a bigger federal grant, however, that didn't go in twenty nineteen due to the pandemic. So since then, this has all been a truly a community effort that we were able to operate and get this far. Um, some of the results we're seeing, we're seeing huge drops in fecal bacteria and a lot of biological indicators as well. Like I mentioned, we're bringing the ecosystem from the bottom up, so not just tilapia on the A'loai now, we're seeing a lot of native fish come back. We see some alama, we see some bigger uh, predators coming in as well. We have turtles, we have sharks, we have monk seals, we have rays being spotted more often, and i- it's, it's a incredible project to see how we can all come together to restore the environment. So, you know, this isn't just leading to educational awareness, i- it's an opportunity for regenerative tourism as well. What started off as just students, teachers, community has now expanded to our visitors being able to give back while they're on the island. So, you know, using EM, uh, using bio remediation in the A'loai is definitely a reactive solution for sure, right? For any long-term change, you gotta look at the whole thing, you gotta look at the whole systems, and adopt the system approach thinking, and address the entire A'ho'pua'a. So, uh, next slide, please. So, eventually, we wanna work upstream, right? That's where the, the major pollutants are coming from. Now, I'm preaching to the choir over here, but uh, Hawaii has a cesspool crisis, right? There's over eighty-eight thousand cesspools throughout the state. Fifty-three million gallons of raw sewage seeping into our environment every day, and on Oahu alone, right, there's over seven thousand cesspools, uh, which accounts for nine percent of the cesspools in the state, and every day, there's four-point-five million gallons of raw sewage being discharged every day. And Kahuluiu has about seven-hundred-forty of these cesspools, which results in historical high levels of fecal bacteria on the whole east side of the island. You know, you can find that data from the Blue Water Task Force online, and you know, if we don't address the, these main pollutants upstream, uh, we're, we're not gonna have any long-term change, right? So, uh, next slide, please. So opportunities, right, are usually disguised as problems, um, with Hawaii's cesspool crisis. If we can use more microorganisms, use the power of microorganisms to address more of our wastewater, you know, allow them to do all the work. Not only can we naturally restore our lands, but people will be engaged, you know, we can engage the community, they can have ownership and pride in, in our land, in our water, our natural resources. You know, that's gonna lead to healthier environments, right, which will lead to healthier food, healthier crops, healthier animals, and ultimately healthier people. Right, we can truly leave Hawaii a better place for the next generation, you know, empower them with the tools to do so. So, uh, I, I know I went a little bit over time, so I, I'm just gonna end it there. I know you guys might have a lot of questions, uh, but that's, that's pretty much all I have for you this evening. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
You get, you get like ninety seconds more if you'd like to say anything else?
Oh, yeah, um, i- this is just a great opportunity, you know, like I said, um, to be a model. Nothing like this has been done, uh, in the state for bio remediation at the scale of, you know, addressing the cesspools, having the community especially involved, you know, starting it through the, through, through the community, and this is truly a, a, a cost-effective solution as well, and it's an overall win-win. You know, everybody wins from this, the, the environment will benefit, the people will benefit, and there, there's really, I, I, I really can't think of any downside besides less pumping, you know, for, for those guys, so. Uh, if you guys have any other questions, um, I, I'm happy to answer. Mahalo for your time.
Mahalo Cory. Mahalo for your presentation. Any questions? Uncle Rick?
Mahalo for all your efforts. Um, it was really heartwarming to see the results of what you folks did in the A'loai and, and seeing the ocean life returning to the A'loai. I think there was a, a clip on a couple manta rays and a seal that, that, that were seen, you know, at least halfway up the, um, A'loai, so, so much mahalos. Um, my question to you is, on this cesspool issue, what could we do as citizens? I mean, could we, you know, how many genki balls would it take to throw in a cesspool to kind of, you know, help things, help things along, and at what duration, like once a month, or once every two months, or? Right, gotta start somewhere, right?
Yeah, mahalo for the question. So, for the cesspools, actually, the, because the EM is in a liquid form, it's actually in a liquid form, so in time, we, we would use genki balls, we would recommend using genki balls more for the, the open waterway, but for the cesspools itself, we would just recommend pouring the liquid EM down the drains and the toilets. That's it. And, and as frequently as possible, you know, however much, um, our, our budget or project or for the pilot test can afford, but if we could just do, if, if the community can just adopt making it as every part of their day, you know, just pour a little bit EM after you use the bathroom and flush, the, the compound effect of that wo- would be, would be massive. And, you know, because we have historical data of this high fecal bacteria levels, I, I think if we continue to do this, if the community can adopt it and keep it going over the long haul, we will see drastic drops in, in those levels of fecal bacteria, and the, the environment start to regenerate on itself, right? Because nature has the ability to restore itself, to regenerate itself, and that's through these microorganisms. So basically, what we're doing is we're accelerating that process by adding more good guys in there. But to answer your question, we would just pour, pour the liquid down the toilets and the drains and the sinks, that's simple.
Mahalo.
And I'm sorry, where, where can we get the EM?
So, we, there, um, EM Hawaii is the authorized supplier and distributor for the island of Hawaii, uh, for this US and adjacent territories for the Pacific. Uh, we would work together with community members to empower them to be able to make their own. Uh, Dr. Higa's philosophy is having a product that's high quality but low cost, and he wants this technology accessible to everyone. So we would provide the EM, but uh, you know, teach people how they can do it, you know, make it themselves, so that everybody can have access to it a- at a very economical way.
Mahalo. John, you had a question?
I'm, I'm more of an English major. I just had to write this down, what you said, opportunities are disguised as problems, I think that, thanks.
Yes.
Maybe we should be talking about genki yogurt or something we can add to our coffee. If you can get this at Starbucks, I think, good. Anyway, thanks.
We do have probiotics available as well, but I didn't wanna promote our company too much. I, I just wanted to focus on the community.
Yeah. You know, um, you heard, you heard the discussion about, about cesspool problem and, and bills and whatnot, um. So if we were to put together a special, a special meeting relating to that issue, to waste, period, um, it's might be an interesting, uh, to add you, add you into that. Mahalo.
I'd be, I'd be honored to be a part of that discussion.
Appreciate it Cory. Thanks for the question, Alba John. Any other questions for members in person? Members in line? Uh, Uncle Ken?
Uh, yeah, we have, uh, the lagoon is our, one of our big polluted bodies, okay, and it feeds right into the bay. And we have like, uh, three or four streams that we have found people were piping overflow from cesspools into the streams. Is it possible to treat the streams up high so that the benefit travels downstream and ultimately into the lagoon? And that's where it finally resides, but if we could do it upstream, it would help, because who knows if these people are still uh, polluting our streams, and we have, they're tributaries, so you, depending on where you get them, the number of streams is what you're gonna be dealing with, but uh, is there a plan or an option for that?
Absolutely, the, the further upstream, we can uh, use EM the better. So as of now, uh, because how the law is written, our, our permit restricts us to pouring the liquid EM into open waterways for the A'loai, just two, two places right now. So, you, you do need a special permit to pour the liquid uh, into the A'loai. As far as genki balls though, that, that can be used definitely further up, but it just depends on who owns the land. So if it's private property, if it's city and county, you know, if you need permits to, to access the area. But to answer your question, definitely, we can work upstream, um, that, that would be the best. However, it, to pour the liquid itself, uh, we will need a permit. However, if everyone uses it in their cesspool septic tanks, that, that can, you know, be a huge, that, that could address the source right there without directly putting it into the stream and open waterway, because that's where it's coming from. Right, so if we can get it in the, in the cesspools, the septic tanks, from there, you know, we can remediate that before it even gets into the waterways.
But anyway, we can uh, deal with EM Hawaii in order to resolve these issues and develop a plan?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All, Uncle Ken, thanks, Akori. Any other questions from, uh, community members in person? Joe? Take a, up on the mic.
Aloha, um, I'm not sure if this was part of the materials that you shared with the board, but do you have a place where we could look up any research or data on how the genki balls changed the microbiome in the A'loai? I'd be really interested to look at those.
Yeah, for sure. Um, you can check out our email, or if you, uh, shoot me our, our, our website, sorry, and uh, you can also look at ma- many other case studies from around the world uh, through the EM, uh, Emerald Japan, EM Research Organization Japan website.
Yeah, I was checking, thanks Cory. I, I was checking out their website before um, we came down to the meeting, and they do have a couple graphs, charts with dates um, on their progress. Um, it is specifically, you know, it does uh, mention like targeting of sludge, right, and so it is, um, right, it does target something specific, right, so it's just to, to be effective, it's just a matter of making sure that it's being implemented the way it's intended, right? Um, yeah, best, mahalo, best practice. Uncle, Uncle Ken, one more thing you wanna say?
Can we get the presentation emailed to us?
For sure. I, I also, uh, put together like a small, short list of frequently asked questions, um, you know, I, and I, and I sent that over to Jesse, so it, you know, if that could be made available, that, you know, that, that'd be great.
Awesome. Yeah, we'll go ahead and add that to the, to the drive. Thanks, Uncle Ken. Thanks Cory. Mahalo. Jesse. And then we have one more question, uh, Bill, online?
See, there we go. Yeah, mahalo. Yeah, I had a question for Cory. Uh, again, most of this relates to wastewater and sewage, and do you have any, uh, efforts towards agricultural lands? Like other beneficial microbes, like rhizobium bacteria that infect the roots of, uh, legumes and mycorrhizal fungi that infect the roots of pretty much everything except for the plants of the mustard family?
Yes, absolutely. So, so EM actually started, uh, to regenerate agriculture. Uh, Dr. Higa was all about that, and, you know, just a little bit about his background. He grew up in the, I mean, he, he was coming up in the eighties where it was all, you know, using chemicals, fertilizers, GMOs. He thought that was the only way to keep up with the increasing, you know, population. However, being in that environment for so much, using all these harmful chemicals, he got pesticide poisoning himself. And that's what, you know, shifted his thinking to looking and exploring alternative ways, and that's how he came across the microorganisms. He started studying that. And so yes, to answer your question, EM can definitely be used for agriculture. That's originally what it was used for, and, you know, a- as he started to develop it, um, we just found out so many other uses, you know, it's not just for agriculture, it's really a holistic product that is really beneficial, not, not just for, you know, plants, but also for animals and humans as well. So, you know, this could be implemented in so many ways, uh, you know, through animal husbandry, through agriculture, uh, so many ways, through health as well, um, you know, especially, you, you can make amendments through baochar, uh, bokashi, you can use EM in, in several ways, but yes, to answer your question, definitely can be used for agriculture.
Thanks Cory. Mahalo Bill for the question. Any other questions from community members in person, online? Okay, uh, mahalo once again Cory. Thank you for your presentation, but we'll have that, um, uh, your presentation filed away for all members on in the drive.
Mahalo everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Um, okay, we're gonna move on. We have the resolution in favor of removal of Pu'u Ma'eli'eli' from the market and the development of a community conservation plan. Joe?
Aloha, everyone. Um, I have two different resolutions. It's this agenda item and the following agenda item. I did print some of them out. Um, I just wanted to, several people who talked earlier in the meeting mentioned the uh, attempted use of public funds by the Belaban Foundation to purchase a large hundred-and-twenty acre property on the side of Pu'u Ma'eli'eli'. I've been working with a couple of people, uh, in the community to come up with ideas for what we can do so that people don't show up and buy big chunks of mountains, because that's kinda nuts, right? So, um, that said, I have, um, twelve printed copies of this right here. I'm also going to say, I've never done this before, so any uh, input, any advice, any adjustments that you folks would be interested in making, I would love to do that, but I have these printed out for the board members here in person. Can I? I made my chief. Um, so this first one, should I read it? Do I need to read it? Okay, so the first one is a resolution in support of protection against development and community stewardship for Pu'u Ma'eli'eli', whereas Pu'u Ma'eli'eli' is a significant hill in Kahuluiu Ko'la'poko'O'aku, and whereas Pu'u Ma'eli'eli' significance is demonstrated by its presence in several mo'alelo involving significant akua, including Hinan Kamapua'a, and whereas Pu'u Ma'eli'eli' significance is archaeologically documented by the presence of several heau, and whereas Pu'u Ma'eli'eli' is recognized by the community as a significant space is demonstrated by the many pieces of testimony submitted to the Legacy Land Conservation Meeting Number Eighty-Eight, and whereas natural spaces are significant resources for native plants and bird species, and where, whereas Pu'u Ma'eli'eli' is steep and unfit for development for agricultural or housing purposes, and whereas any development of this property is in direct conflict to the rural and agricultural nature of Kahuluiu, therefore, I would like it to be resolved that the Kahuluiu Neighborhood Board Number Twenty-Nine supports the removal of this property from the open market and encourages the development of community-grounded stewardship plans for Pu'u Ma'eli'eli' to preserve the natural and undeveloped nature of this property.
Mahalo, any, uh, any comments? Would, you wanna say anything?
Nope, that's it. I said it already.
Yeah, one, one second. Uh, Jesse?
Uh, I would just like to add a friendly amendment that all, if the board chooses to move ahead and adopt this resolution, that all copies be sent to its specific departments, um, representatives and community at large. That would be my only friendly amendment.
And mahalo. We'll note that.
Start amending, we have to make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we'll do that, yeah. Yeah, we're just taking note of, of things that we wanna possibly amend further, further down the line in the agenda and board business. Um, but yeah, remember, Maka, you know, we'll take, we'll take that into consideration, um, and get that out to everybody upon the amendment. Any other discussion around, um, the language? The current resol? Members in person? Members online? Um, Rachel? Uh, we don't have a digital copy, uh? We do? Okay, give us one second, you guys. I just want, um, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll pull it up for, um, for the board business when we take the vote. Um, but just any questions from members thus far on, on what was read? Okay, Joe, anything else?
Um, I was just gonna say that I know that, uh, details that are in this resolution are surface level. There's names for the heau, there's details to the mo'alelo, and uh, there's many sources and like other community references that are not a part of this. And so I think that if there's any suggestions for further incorporating that, at any point, I just wanted to acknowledge that this was fast and short.
Oh, sorry, I interrupted. I think we're gonna move, we're gonna make the motion in board business. We're just having community discussions so that we don't violate Centri' laws.
Any other questions for community? Online, in person? Regarding the language on the resolution? Yeah, Auntie Christie? On the mic?
Here as a community member. Is the, the heau, is it documented? And if it is, it should, it should be stated in that.
So, uh, looking at sites of O'aku, there are several heau that are around Pu'u Ma'eli'eli'. Um, the specific property in mention that was requested by the Belaban Um, the specific property in mention that was requested by the Belaban Foundation is like maybe between a third and the half of the undeveloped area on Puuma Elieli. And so the specifics of where the heau are, there's like five. Um, but if it's in that property, I would look to like fill to find out whether or not it's inside of the property boundaries. And then um, the Belaban Foundation proposal did acknowledge the presence of a heau. Um, and so they were like, there's a heau there. That's what they said.
I'll. Antiraki?
The question was, is it documented?
I have a meeting, Auntie Christie, I have a meeting with Shifty tomorrow. I'll go ahead and get that information. Anything logged in, then I'll get the number. Yep. Mahalo.
Yeah, Kaua'ouaihale is at the top of the ridge there and there's several others around, but that's the name of one of them.
Mahalo.
Uh, sorry.
Why just?
Um, so I think the purpose of getting this out was getting it out quick since Belavon is pursuing the parcel. And although I agree that we should name the heau. Um, I think it's more pertinent that we take action sooner than later to prevent any development in perpetuity or at least attempt to block any development in perpetuity. So maybe if there's a list of five within the total TMK, we can just say whereas one, two, three, four, and five are located at TMK um X amount of numbers. Um, and unfortunately generalize it there, right? As a native Hawaiian, I'm not, I'm not happy to do that, but uh just to get it through. Wait. Uh, Antiraki? Do you want to chime in on that?
In in my opinion, it doesn't matter the sacred places. Again, this is outside people coming in to exploit our culture. It's zone conservation or preservation, whatever, then we should go with that. And nothing should, only one, one thing should be actually built on conservation and preservation property. And they're going to be on and be up beyond that. So we gotta make the motion is not to go with that. And then we can name any heau, we can name the heaus after. The point is they're already, you know, trying to change the zoning. And our board is, our board has to be able to change the zoning or not.
And and one thing that I'd like to add about the way that the the two resolutions are differentiated is that this one is specifically for uh conservation of Puuma Elieli as a pool. And I think that there with that, it's not specifically that one TMK. It's that Puuma Elieli is important, so it will be easy to pull up some heau names.
I think in our offices also we have maps of documented um heaus in Kola Poco Moko. The point is, everybody knows that Puuma Elieli is an observation point for ancient Hawaiians, right down to today to modern issue with the military. The point is, again, conservation, preservation, that's what we should be focusing on right now on board.
Yeah.
And I just said, you know, thanks, Joe, for putting this together. It's, I'm really pleased that it's straightforward, simple, like Rocky's saying, gets to the the point that we need to get to. Just by way of background, for those who don't know or may be listening in. Um, this property, this particular property was purchased um by Jinsuro Kawamoto a while back. Jinsuro was one of those guys, he'd drive around his Cadillac and sends, send somebody else, say, buy that property. Then it went to Alexander and Baldwin, I believe, was involved at one point. And then to the current owners, um, Belaban does not own it. The current owners are the Lees, right? And so, you know, I think all of us have been watching this ridge for a very long time. Um, also really important to to note that, um, you know, we battled this as a community. We battled off development and golf course in Heiheke Valley, you know, another huge part of Maileli. And and so what what we're talking about here, uh, you know, stopping any development of this area is to help set the stage, I think, for really developing something like a Maileli Conservancy to protect the whole ridge. Um, and add it into what has already been protected, even where you have individual properties. Um, you know, I grew up on on Lulani Street and the property that our family has has conservation land goes right up to the top of Maileli. And and we're not allowed to do anything other than conserve it. Um, and, you know, that's that's understood by those who have properties. So anyway, that that by way of background, just so everybody understands.
Mahalo, Mahalo, Uncle John. Antiraki?
And remember that the Heiheke community fucked that for over ten years, keeping it away from this kind. They did a good job, dog, I say. Right on. Mahalo.
Ian?
It might be enough to say um that Puuma Elieli is part of a traditional cultural landscape uh that is significant and has several um uh cultural sites listed on the SIHP, the state inventory of historic places. So, you know, it can be generalized like that. And I think, I think Auntie Rocky is right, the focus is there. And that that it's mentioned that there, you know, that these places come up in the stories of mo'olelo. I think is enough to, it is going to a vote like um our co-chair was saying, our vice chair was saying, yes, thanks.
Mahalo again. If you wanna, if you wanna um write anything in the chat, just so that Rachel has that on record, we can add it to the minutes. Um, feel free, of course. Um, we did, any community members in person? Go ahead. Take the mic. Stitch your name for the record, please.
Jane Beechi.
Aloha.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to kind of, I'm a, I'm a Kahuluiu resident. I live on Puuma Elieli and I just wanted to give my support for this kind of resolution. And I particularly appreciate the kind of community stewardship element of it. Because when I was a kid, I don't remember anyone hiking up to the pillboxes. And now it's like a regular trail and I love seeing people hike and it's a beautiful view. And it's so wonderful to see people making a connection to the place. But it is something that can get overlooked and there is a lot of erosion that comes there. So I think that element of not having it just focused on the that one TMK and the Belabans, but also just kind of stewarding the whole of Maileli Ridge, I think, is really, really smart and really needed and timely. And then my my one other comment was just, um, I don't know much about this, uh, but this process. But if there's a resolution like this that's saying like, you know, not to have this property on the market, what what kind of tea are in that? Or is that just like notice from, you know, putting putting potential buyers and the current owner on notice that the neighborhood board have a have an opinion about what happens here? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for that. So we're actually planning um a larger community meeting to discuss more details on how we plan to move forward. Um, but what the neighborhood board can do is create the resolution that is logged for the record and send it to DPP so that even if somebody else tries to come and develop this parcel, DPP would issue the building permit so they can acquire the land all they want, but they can't build it unless DPP says so that they already have it on record well in advance that we're keeping it as conservation. That's the will of the community.
Right off the bat, one of the most important entities to um be made aware of the resolution we passed tonight will be the Legacy Lands Commission themselves. Yeah, uh, because they, I mean, you know, they heard from a hundred plus people in this. But they didn't hear from the Kahuluiu Neighborhood Board, and so that's where they're in. And Belaban never came forward.
Mahalo. Yeah. Um. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, John. Sorry, John. One second. We did have Amy online. Amy, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for uh letting me speak here. Um, I wanted to say I'm in, I'm in support of this. I think it's important um um for this to move forward to protect Puuma Elieli. I would also like to echo what Rocky had said about this is state conservation land and city preservation land. And as a, as a city entity, I mean, the zoning matters. And so I think we really should press that, that this um, it should be preserved. That's why it's zoned that way to begin with. And so I would just like to echo that, but I'm in support of this going forward. I think it makes a lot of sense. So thanks, Joe and and Jesse and whoever else helped put this together.
Mahalo, Amy. One, one last comment, yeah, go ahead.
What what Amy just said, I think, is is an important additional whereas that we probably want to consider just literally state whereas the property is state conservation, city preservation. It acknowledges zoning. Does it say that? No.
Yeah, you could try one. Yeah, yeah.
So that would be one whereas, and the other whereas would be what um Ian Masterson suggested about um uh Puuma Elieli being part of a significant traditional and cultural landscape.
Yeah, Antiraki?
She mentioned something about the hiking, you know, that the hikers, that they really opened up a can of worms. Because everybody goes there every day, going through no trespassing signs. I talked to people before we brought it up, it should be go under some kind of management. Maybe the people who are on that side by um the Kola. Maybe they have a, I'm sure they have some kind of organization over there. Maybe they should go in some kind of managing hiking up there. Because how many times you have to go and rescue people over there? But, you know, going up there, that's why, we're gonna put up, we're gonna put up a fence, uh, Koko Evi. Because if they get hurt on our side of the property, we're liable. And every single day, I see people, in fact, I've talked to a nurse, she goes to hiking. And if she's a nurse, she can read the sign that says no trespassing, but you take the family. The point is keeping it conservation, keeping it preservation, whatever. And maybe get some kind of manage, management to manage those trails. But just, you know, I'm just so tired of seeing people coming from everywhere and exploring our culture and that is very irritating.
Ako.
Mahalo.
Any other comments, questions from members online, community? Anybody?
Okay, uh, I give one comment. Um, so I did attend the Legacy Land Meeting, yeah, eighty-eight. Um, the the Belaban Foundation was was faced with ninety-eight pieces of testimony and opposition from community. Yeah, so I just want to Koko O and commend everyone here in this room, Joe, this board and everyone else online and those who are also not in this room. Yeah, things like this don't fly. Things like this will never fly. Um, and it starts with you guys here in this room and it starts with this board. And so the fact that Belaban Foundation, um, you know, didn't even come to this board before taking something like that to the Legacy Land Foundation, asking for millions of dollars to develop it. Of of. Um, yeah, that don't fly. So second point, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so the second one, um, for anyone who is here, sorry, for anyone who is able to listen into it, um, it was kind of wild. So, um, we just kind of detailed inside of this. We detailed some of the specific things that, in addition to the general goal of keeping Ma Elieli conservation and there's the additional thing of being like, I don't know who these people are. And they said a lot of crazy stuff and we're gonna write them down in case they try and show up some other place because they said some wild stuff, so.
Um, Joe, read slow.
I will read slow, sorry. I, we were just behind on the agenda, so I was trying to catch up. So, um, this is a resolution in opposition to Belaban Foundation ownership of land in Kahuluiu. Whereas the Belaban Foundation submitted an inappropriately ill-prepared request to the Legacy Land Conservation Commission Meeting eighty-eight on January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five, in which the Belaban Foundation asked for one point four million dollars of public funding to purchase a hundred and thirty-one acres of Puuma Elieli, TMK is included. Um, and whereas the Belaban Foundation does not demonstrate any organizational history or capacity for land maintenance, conservation planning, or community-based program delivery, despite naming these as the goals of their project. And whereas the Belaban Foundation request indicated primary goals of conservation, helping Hawaiian community despite having no history of promoting or achieving these goals. And whereas the Belaban Foundation property, uh, proposed property is zoned conservation in conflict with the treehouse development, with the treehouse goal. And whereas the Belaban Foundation publicly available documents list co-working spaces as their addresses. As their address, sorry. Um, whereas the Belaban Foundation demonstrated an inability to differentiate native and invasive species in a Legacy Land Conservation Committee site visit. And whereas the Belaban Foundation and its membership has no demonstrated connections to Hawaii or Hawaii communities. And whereas the Belaban Foundation has no demonstrated track record of success in developing or delivering programming to support Hawaii. And whereas the Belaban Foundation demonstrated non-commitment to their stated goals through the removal of significant features of the project, including farms and eco-housing. And whereas Mario Miskosa represented the goals of the project in communication with neighbors, sorry. Mario Miskosa misrepresented the goals of the project in communication with neighbors in order to acquire signatures. And whereas Mario Miskosa, treasurer of Belaban Foundation and representative at LLCC Meeting eighty-eight, made confusing and unrealistic claims during the proposal presentation to the LLCC. And whereas commissioners from the LLCC reported receiving cease and desist letters from Belaban Foundation partners mentioned in their application. Um, I would like it to be resolved that the Kahuluiu Neighborhood Board recognizes the Belaban Foundation as an unreliable community partner and uh not to support the acquisition of this or any other conservation properties in Kahuluiu.
Any discussion?
Some of them are redundant. I thought maybe we'd strike some, maybe we like them all. I don't know. I just put it out there. Thank you.
So if I may, Parker, I want to say, um, you know, I was aware of this other reso coming at us a little bit. And I'm gonna say, thanks, Joe, this is really great testimony. But I have questions about whether a neighborhood board wants to come out and just rip into a particular landowner or not landowner, particular party of lots of things. All of this is really, really important to say. Um, in speaking to Legacy Land Commission, uh, City Council, State, whatever. But I think what we really, really want to stand on, and I'll just say this, is the previous resolution. But we have to keep all of this in mind. And and this comes from having you folks having uh read through testimony. I think you told me that you have gotten all the copies of the testimony and that's really excellent. You have to be armed to that, to fight a battle like this. Um, and I also want to express thanks to Belaban for stirring the pot. We needed a good fight ahead. So anyway, mahalo.
Mahalo, Antiraki?
Yeah, I, I watched the club vote in the testimony also, and I watched it on. And that was the first time, because I I go to all the series. It's the first time I ever heard one of the Legacy Land board members really light out into this um person about coming to the board. From my understanding, that land was already donated. Coming to the legacy land and asking them for monies to purchase the land. And he could barely talk English. I think he had an Italian accent. I called, I think it's an insult, and I think we gotta make a move on it. Maybe condense these two together. And, you know, we gotta stand strong and keep to that, again, conservation, preservation, and we should not ever change that zoning.
Question.
Okay, mahalo. So board members, I just want to ask, so we're, it sounds like we're gonna move ahead in board business with the first reso. Is there anything from this reso that we would like to combine into the first reso? If you guys can just take a moment to look at it and you can answer that in board business. And then we'll continue community discussion if they have anything else. Joe, I think it sounds like we're gonna just condense, if you're good with that. Okay.
We got a point. I I hear what you're saying, Rocky, and and um I think what's missing here, what really, excuse me, what really pisses me off is that the Lees never came to the neighborhood board. Um, and they are quietly trying to sell this property if they haven't already. I don't know if they don't, we don't know if they don't either, what? Yeah, so that, so they, they're trying to offload this property. What did they buy it for? I think it was something like five hundred thousand. And so they're trying to, they're, they're, they're offloading this property that they know. They're not even, you mentioned about them being allowed to build and one structure. Actually, they're not allowed to. That's it. That's an option that they can try to exercise, but it's not a guarantee. You have conservation land, you can apply to build a single house, but but you're not guaranteed to get it. And so, so there's a whole lot of misre, misrepresentation that starts with the current owner. I think that's who we gotta go after.
Okay, so do we want to add that to the reso? Right now, where the agenda topic are these two resolutions? And if we're going to combine them and what we would like to see from the second one going into the first one, if anything at all? And I'm gonna just let you board members marinate on that in person and online. And then Chair, if you want to go to community, and then we can get it moving.
Community, any questions, concerns, discussion? In person, online?
Yeah.
Uh. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I just wanted to just chime in. So, um, the Lees, the current landowners, did the same exact thing that the Belaban Foundation is trying to do now. As a few years back. Because a few years back, um, they had their real estate representative, Sean Lopez. They called a meeting with all the neighbors here. They didn't do it, like this was before even I was on the board. So, they came and they held a meeting here in my neighborhood. So I live at the base of Pu'u Ma'i Eli, like one of the houses is behind my house. My family's been fighting the development for this place for like thirty-plus years, you know, Calla Moto. I knew that guy. Yeah, I used to see him. He's always tried to come around here. But anyway. The Lees did the same thing. They were also trying to propose doing the same development on this mountain. And they met with our community, our neighborhood, and our neighborhood said no. And that's, that's the issue is like, it, it, they, they realized it was a loss. Like, I remember I was watching people that I didn't know coming here, taking pictures of the mountain from every vantage point they could find on our street. And it's just, they, they tried to do the same exact thing. They proposed this to just us, though. They didn't come to the board. I know they didn't come to the board. Because when the, when the neighborhood said no, they're just like, okay, we're not gonna do it. And then that's why they're trying to offload it now. So, like, I'm, I'm for all of this. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, everyone. Let's make it happen.
Mahalo, Kiony. Okay, board members, I'm gonna cut you. Just think about this, because we're gonna go over this in board business again. Community, in person, any comments or questions you have on what we're discussing? I know we move fast. If you have any questions.
I feel short every time I come up here. Um, I guess the only thing in terms of whether or not you end up combining the resolutions, I think there is a lot of strength in having that first resolution be so positive about stewarding the property. So I'm not sure if, however, whether they're merged or not merged. I think that's a really important thing to focus on because it is so positive and it's like the community engagement and stewardship. So, that's my only.
Wow, I agree. Joe, you wanna go ahead? Can you make it quick?
Um, yeah, I think that, again, I fully agree with that. I think that was the intent behind separating them the, the first time around. And my purpose in submitting this second one as was to vote, one of them is that the Bella Bond Foundation in that hearing, when they withdrew their application, said that they were going to find other money in order to purchase it outright. Um, and I felt like in order to, like, we should, anybody, we should think about this. If there's any approvals or loans or anything that needs to happen in order to make that happen, having something in hand that says that the Kahului Neighborhood Board recognizes them as an unreliable partner, or just something that is documented that says like, like one of the commissioners in that meeting said, we have received cease and desist letters from partners you named in your application to remove their name from your application. So that sounds kind of wild. And it, they said it in the meeting, and I don't know how to govern it, so I wrote one of these. And if that's not the appropriate pathway to make sure that that's documented and ready to go, um I think that that's fine. I agree, though, that having something that is, like, this is an important place, we should conserve it. I feel like this is slightly separate thing. So if there's work that needs to be done on this, I'd be happy to talk to people to figure out what we can do to pass something that is adjusted. Or the second one, if we need to document it, but if the board's decision is that, um, it's documented enough already, and neighborhood board action is not needed, um, I would rather have this one go through with, just like we love Pu'u Ma'i Eli, but it's in your hands, so thank you.
Mahalo, Joe. Okay, Amy, uh, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, just, um, after having been on the neighborhood board for many, many, many years, I would just caution the board about, um, naming a specific in part individual as, or entity. And in terms of not wanting, we can name them in terms of the activities that they have. I don't know that we can say we don't want them as people or entities to do it. That potentially opens up the board, I think, to some concerns. I, I would have concerns if I was still sitting on the board. I think the, the approach of, we're gonna protect Pu'u Ma'i Eli, and we don't care who else is coming in. And, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's Bella Bond or somebody else that wants to do something similar. But it's protection of the Pu'u is really what we're after, and I would suggest that that's a a smart place for the board to be, um, in terms of protecting the board. All of the stuff that Joe said, I mean, I, I looked up their nine nineties and stuff too. I mean, I, I agree with what Joe's saying, but I don't think it's, would be wise for the neighborhood board to take a position that says this person can't own land here. I just think that opens, there's been other, um, other neighborhood boards that have taken similar positions that have ended up in lawsuits, so, over the years, just by two cents.
And I. Mahalo, Amy. How about John?
Amy, while you're, while you're listening in, um, looking at this last, for the first, for the first reso. Therefore be it resolved that the Kahului Neighborhood Board number twenty-nine supports the removal of this property from the open market. And, um, that language, I feel like that language needs maybe a little tweaking. I think it's something along the lines of urging our state and county, county level government to pursue options for removal of this property over there. Yeah, because I mean, we want to, what we're hoping, I think, is that we, we do get it off the market. What are the means by which we can do that is what we're really trying to encourage. Yeah, but I, and I absolutely agree with you about, we, we, you know, we don't want to get sued by Bella Bond. Can't get in between, you know, you know, transaction, but yeah.
Auntie Rocky?
I agree with both Amy and John. Amy's right, we shouldn't be using any names. But you know, I think that whole, that whole Mona over there should, should be kept in conservation, preservation whichever. Because on the other side, facing the, um, Marine Corps Air Station, there's a log just over there right in the middle of it. Although it was destroyed when somebody bulldozed to get the core trees out of there, Mona is still there. But the point is, everybody tries to, you know, our family's been there over a hundred years in, in that area. So, and then John stores it, but the point is, when I heard that one of the board members from the Legacy Land said that, don't ever come before us again before, um, convening with the community, and that's, that's important. You know, if the Kahului Neighborhood Board didn't put in any testimony, this is time that we do that. Take a stand. Mahalo.
Oh, Auntie Rocky. I'm sorry.
Just one more quick thing, if I, if I could, the, in the chat, and I don't know whether all of you can see it, um, live like that, but in the chat, Ian wrote a really strong whereas, that I think captures sort of what we're talking about in terms of a traditional cultural landscape. And then it also sort of, instead of saying taking it off the open market, it sort of says what we want it to do, which is preserved in alignment with conservation and preservation. So that might be a way to get to that issue.
Mahalo, Amy. Uncle Ken?
Yeah, I'm looking at the GIS right now. And it doesn't say preservation one or preservation two. But when that happens, it, preservation two is usually along with conservation land. And, uh, so it only says preservation, and it gives, uh, the assessed value for property tax purposes as three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, five hundred. So three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, five hundred for the entire parcel. And, uh, it's only listed as preservation. No conservation, no divi, subdivisions, anything like you see in other areas.
Mahalo, Ken. I'll make note of that. Um, I did wanna, I did wanna just, um, make a comment on, on Auntie Rocky's. We did want to, um, put reso right in front of the board, but just a matter of when we got notified of this issue was the last meeting. Yeah, we just, it was too late. Um, but we did, I just wanted to make note, I submitted testimony in my personal capacity. I didn't, I know other members did. Um, many people did, so, um, hopefully we did have the board itself encumbered within its person. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Uncle Dan? Uncle Cliff? Uncle Cliff, can you pass Uncle Dan the mic, please?
I think you want a reso that will enable every single member of the board to vote for it, okay? And I guess, I hate to say normally, but in the past, the, uh, you know, who's is sued is the city. Because we represent the city, so it's really important that you understand that we're an advisory board and we don't get to, not only not to slander people, but, you know, to, the first reso would be offensive to anybody who read it. Um, and I, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I have the one that says that the Bella Bond Fund is an inappropriately ill-prepared request. Okay. I don't know which one that is, but you, you really can't say that because we represent the city. And when you say that, you put the city in a situation that, and, and normally the neighborhood assistant would come up and say, hey, stop, folks, can't do that. Uh, because it's not in the charter, you know, we're not given the authority to do that. But more importantly, you want a reso that everybody can wholeheartedly support. And it sounds like everybody's on, on board with this. It's just a matter of getting the language squared away.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna work on the draft. I just want to remind everybody that a community member brought this to us, that this is not our board. Putting this together, this was important enough for community to come together, a whewee of community in their own free time, and Joe authored this. And so, let's, uh, let's.
I don't know how to govern, so any adjustments, I appreciate. If it is helpful, I would be happy to work with people and present something in next month's meeting as well, but if we're, we're doing it, thank you. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Mahalo. Any other questions, concerns, discussion relating community presentation B and community presentation C? Online, anything? Okay, we're gonna park those there. We're gonna move on to D. We got SMA single-family home at four seven dash seven one one Kamaha Highway, James Sipin, uh, Mark Holland Whale Environmental. Online. Where's Mark? I see Mark. Mark, go ahead.
Sir. Can you hear what I'm saying?
Sorry, Mark, you're super, super soft there.
Can you hear me?
We can barely hear you, Mark. Sorry, well, let's try and, give us one second, let's try and see if we can get in. Try and go again, Mark, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
I apologize, yeah, try mute and unmute, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can, okay, try and speak as loud as you can. We can barely hear you, but I think if we're all quiet, we might be able to make out whatever you have to say. Go ahead.
I waited a long time. I hope you can hear me. Um, so this is, um, James Sipin's property. Um, nearby, uh, where you are. Trying to. Okay, do it.
It's okay, James. Uh, so, uh, so Mark, we do have, um, aerial images of the property, and so we are aware of, of the parcel being in discussion, so you can proceed. Um, we should be able to follow along.
Okay, so, uh, let me do this. This is, uh, Jim Sipin's property. It's a CPR lot. Um, the original lot is built on, on the shoreline side. With, uh, single-family dwelling. And then Jim wants to build on the, I guess they call it the Makka side, on the Camp Highway side, um, with a new single-family dwelling. It's already gone through DPP's pre-review. They'll continue to go through the, uh, preconsult the period. This is one of the requirements to go through with your board, um, to understand, um, what they're trying to do. Um, so, um, it's a single-family dwelling on the CPR un-vacated property. Where the other properties are already built on the shoreline side. So DPP's already come back and said, okay, it's great. Just go through the neighborhood board presentation and show you that everything's on the Makka side, which we are doing. Um, it was very interesting with, um, Baka, the understand the things that he is talking about. And we had the EPR winners for some mitigation for, um, erosion control, for everything down the line. And so things we hear for this presentation, we can help if you want to have us contribute before. So, um, meanwhile, on this project, um, it's pretty simple. It's a, um, vacant lot on the CPR side of the lot they're always built on. Um, they want to put a single-family dwelling. Um, he's a University of Wa, uh, oh, uh, University San Diego professor with his kids. Um, and they want to retire to this property, um, which we think is acceptable. Um, and so they, they propose them disdwelling, um, which is on their CPR lot they bought, um, a few years ago. And they want to, um, develop it, uh, according to the guidelines we propose. Thank you.
Mahalo, um, butcher?
Mahalo for being with us. Uh, I just have a few questions for you. We noted on the DPP website that it was already rejected for a permit. Is that because you guys skipped the protocol and didn't come to us first? Or was it rejected for other means?
Yeah, it was rejected because, um, the, the building plans, um, need to have updates. And they provided already.
Okay, so you're resubmitting to DPP? Because the final notice was rejection on DPP's website. So are you resubmitting or you're in, you're already in submittal? Where are we at in the process?
So they're asking us to have the neighborhood board meet and resubmit with revised building plans. We can't resubmit until we go through your board. And we can resubmit, so.
Okay, um, it doesn't state online. Are you pursuing a SMA minor permit or a SMA major permit? It just says SMA.
It's gonna be an SMA ma, uh, major, that's where we go for the board meeting.
Okay, so SMA major, I believe, if I'm correct, which I think I am, the threshold is of over four hundred fifty thousand dollars for the project? So something.
We think it's about, we think it's about five fifty, so it just ticked over the.
Something of that nature. We'd like to see, um, the schematic and the plan when you come to us. Do you happen to have that available?
You already were given that, uh, the entire, entire pre, pre SMA process will submit to you. You already have the.
Rachel, let me receive that. Yeah, can you pull it up for us? Thank you. Okay, and then I also am very well acquainted with that area because my parents live across the street. Um, are you, is the homeowner able to acquire flood insurance in that space?
I don't understand what you said. Can you say it again?
Will the homeowner be able to acquire flood insurance in a zone X space?
Is that actually only required to have any flood insurance? It's only on, um, AE or XT.
Okay, so no then. Thank you.
James, go ahead.
James, you, you're, um, a consultant to the landowner?
Can you say that again?
You're a consultant to the landowner, correct?
I'm an environmental consultant.
Yeah. Um, you.
Maybe, um, Paco will give me five minutes to say something I want to say. I've been on this um, WebEx for like a few minutes. Um, if any things I can contribute as EPA award winner for someone mitigation for award winner for erosion control. For, would, award winner for erosion mitigation, mitigation. Um, the things that have been said today where they're already, um, have been addressed many times in the mainland, not here. Um, I've lived in Hawaii for 20 years. Um, and there's things that are not being addressed. There's things also today early in the neighborhood board. So thank you.
Can I, can I just, uh, suggest to you that something, you know, a development of, of this type, especially in the SMA, which is a pretty sensitive area for us. I think it warrants, I think it warrants you coming to the neighborhood board, meeting in person. Um, it's very difficult for us to have a conversation with you, uh, in a virtual, um, way. Um, you know, there, there's so much involved in this. There's no sewer system that serves this area. All along this stretch, there are all kinds of issues with the septic systems that already exist. So yeah, my, my suggestion would be to you and to fellow board members is that, um, you know, this should not be considered. You're coming before the neighborhood board. You need to be here in person, present this in person. Um, so that we can actually have proper, uh, questioning and so on and get the kind of information that we need.
So I just want you people to understand that we, um, SMA permit assessment with DPP takes a long time. Um, we want to understand that this was sent to the neighborhood board, the Neighborhood Commissioners Association, like five months ago. Um, it's been asked to be heard. No one heard it. We've asked again and again and again for the, your board to hear it. We are coming to your board tonight, um, again. Um, where we probably don't have to do two, um, but we are. And we're more willing to have you entertain the entire thing. We sent you the entire, um, file. Um, and we sent you the presentation board we gave you tonight. And then if you're gonna say again, that it's not what I want, it's not the proper, um, presentation. I'm sorry, but it's.
No, no, no.
Like five or six months. I'm sorry.
No, there's nothing to be sorry, Mark. Um, butcher?
Mahalo, Mark.
I'm sorry, Paco. Uh, we, we've sent this again and again and again. You don't want to hear it.
Kalamai Mark, who did you send this again and again and again to? Because we as the executives.
It's been sent, since, it's been sent since early last year.
Okay, could you, could you tell me whose email addresses you sent it to? Because if you're sending it to the wrong email address, we can't hear it. And so.
I sent it, I went to the neighborhood board. Neighborhood board told me to send it to, uh, Mo. Who we work for a lot of times.
So unfortunately, you have been sending it.
Can you, can you just listen to me for a second, please?
No, I can't. Unfortunately, Mo is not on our board. He sent it to the wrong.
Can you just listen to me for a second?
You sent it to the wrong neighborhood board. Mo is on the Kani Ohe neighborhood board.
Can you just listen to me for a second?
Not if you're gonna keep interrupting. We could just shut it down right now because really you sent us a presentation and we found it luckily, but you're supposed to come here and explain things better. That's the way this process works, unfortunately.
It's been sent to Mo. It's been sent to.
I would like to make a suggestion to the board that we table this subject, but, and bring it up in the next, maybe the next meeting and this person come in person. Because I really don't know what he's talking about. I'm looking at the map. It looks on the shoreline and I think we need more, um, explanation on it. So I ask him to table it for now. Mahalo.
Thank you. Any other discussion, questions, concerns on this issue?
Can you listen to me for a second?
No, I'm sorry. We're gonna proceed, Mark. Um, the thing is, yeah, with this, even with the presentation, if, even if we were to have seen this and whenever you said you had sent that email, um, the details are still unclear. We're still gonna need, um, Mr. Sipin himself, along with you, if you'd like to go ahead and support that, to come here in person for something like an SMA major permit. Yeah, because these plans are pretty major.
It's already presented twice. Thank you.
Yeah, being sent is being sent. We would like a thorough presentation explaining the details. Um, because there are slides that cannot be spoken for, that I would like either Mr. Sipin or yourself to be here in person, um, to speak on behalf of.
This is just ridiculous what you're doing.
Well, we're gonna go ahead and move on to residents' community concerns.
Go ahead. Can I comment? Doesn't matter.
Can you go ahead and mute, Mr. Holland? Mahalo, thank you. Um, residents' community concerns. Anyone in person? Anti-Rocky?
I just want to make two announcements. Is that a concern? Because people are leaving. Is one is that our, uh, Kola Pokamai Civic Club again has given, uh, scholarships and the deadline is April 15th. Anybody from the nine, six, seven, four, four can apply for it. And I would advise anybody to look it up online. It's kolapokamaisivicclub.org. Um, and then another thing is we're having a scavenger hunt on, um, the eleven Aha Pua in the Kola Pokamoku. And the first prize is, I think it's like $1,200. Can team up. So, and that one is gonna be on February 22nd. So I wanna, and we're gonna meet at Winward Mall. Get your team together. Whoever wants to join in, join in. We're sponsoring it. You don't have to pay nothing. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Tiara. Any other residents' community concerns in person, online? Uncle Ken?
Uh, yes, I, uh, I've looked it up. And, uh, January 13th was the last written communication and the project was the SMA final refusal was closed January 25th. Twenty-fourth? Yeah, January 24th, last month. So I don't know what time he's talking about, but it was just closed like since our last meeting. And so anyway, um, I just want to interject that. Thank you.
Mahalo, Uncle Ken. Um, yeah, Keone, online.
Uh, yeah, community concerns. Um, then I had a few of my community approach me and ask me again. I brought this up like the first year I was on neighborhood board, but they still want to know what's going on, what, what the reason for those fire hydrants are from the Long Bridge to the pass that appeared by anti-rocky's place. Um, I guess, I, I guess it's from what I gathered, it's, the question is being fueled by all of this new potential development projects and stuff happening and people are concerned that like there's something in the mix. So just throwing it out there, i- if we can find out. I don't remember Juro actually giving us a definitive answer for the reason for those fire hydrants. But a lot of the community is concerned that it's, it has something to do with something that they're going to try to do later. So just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Mahalo, Keone. Any other? Yep, Uncle Rick?
I just want to voice my disappointment with this community for the way we've allowed, um, folks to treat that low area, um, there where the mud bog, mud bog was happening. I mean, it's just disgraceful how, you know, we, we have laws for runoff water and all that kind of stuff. And the, the place is just an absolute disaster. Uh, just, um, I think we need to convene a meeting um, with public officials and come up with a better use for the property or, or. Anyway, I, I've always said it would make a good open market, but I mean, I'm up with some ideas, but when you see the neighbor right down the street between where the mud bog is and, um, Aha Olelo Road and their vehicle is covered with mud, I mean, it's just, and, and the rubbish that gets dumped along the side of the road, it's disgusting. I'm sorry. Mahalo.
Mahalo, Uncle Rick. Any other comments, questions, concerns from residents in the community in person, online? Amy, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I just wanted to let the board and the community know that, um, Huile Mea I was successful in getting the next phase of the Solve It Prize, um, to continue to explore the concept of the hydro project in Waahole with the microgrid. So we're gonna try to be scheduling a meeting in the community, probably in March. I don't know yet whether it's gonna be before or after the next neighborhood board meeting, but, um, if anyone's interested, I know Joe's in the room, um, and John's there. And if you wanted to get, you know, emails to them, we can try to make sure that everybody knows about the meeting. Anyway, just an announcement. Thank you.
Mahalo, Amy. Any other resident community concerns online?
Chair, Sakamoro.
Yep, go ahead, Donald.
Yeah, Chair, I, I know the, there was a email blast sent out by neighborhood board, uh, commission office about the Honolulu rate commission. This is the ones for the bus and handy van skyline rate increases. There should be a meeting at Canary District Park, Building Two, uh, tomorrow evening from 6:30 to whenever it gets testimony. Uh, the agenda was sent out, but, um, uh, concern was to charge a 25 cent fee for cash fares on the bus. Uh, that's kind of ridiculous because they want to force everybody to go on holo card. But some people don't have enough money to put money on the holo card and pay cash, you know, they're just doing a one-way ride. But, um, yeah, 6:30, uh, at Canary District Park, Building Two, uh, 6:30 to whatever the testimony is, but just wanted to mention that.
Mahalo, Donald. Appreciate it. Okay. If there are no more resident concerns in person online, we're gonna move on to board business. Uh, we do have quorum. Can I get a motion to approve the Wednesday minutes from January? I get second. Got a most, um, mo- oh, sorry. Moved by a member, um, rapport, and seconded by a member called people. Uh, can I get a roll call vote?
Actually, if anybody has any amendments, let me know now. But if there's no amendments, we can approve the minutes as written. Yes, you know, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Appreciate it. Moving on to board business point B, we have the discussion, uh, motion on the wastewater variance application number WW83DOC24 uh, for 49716 Kamaha Highway. This was, um, requested by member Masterson. Um, any discussion you want to start off with, Ian?
Sorry, um, yeah, so I saw that John had left and he was gonna talk about it. Um, you know, we, we, so 49176, I believe, is a correction I should make right there so that it's on record. Um, that property is, uh, challenging to identify, but appears to be the house that is next to the gate uh, adjacent to Haki Puku stream. Uh, this, this request for variance was put out and, uh, at a and given a public comment period that was three weeks between the two meetings in, um, between, uh, I believe it was between September and October meeting and closed. And so I brought it up in, uh, uh, I believe it was October, it might have been October and then November. Um, and, um, the message didn't get to Katie at that time. So, you know, I mean, the purpose was this, uh, was the amount of requests and my own upset about the fact that we need more time to address issues with Department of Health concerning cesspools and septic systems than we are being given. Um, especially in this case. Uh, I've, you know, I, I wrote a detailed letter. You know, I also wrote the basics for, um, a, uh, resolution to request more time for DOH. Now, I know we have the resolution master, the institutional memory of, um, of, of our former board member here today. And, um, during that time period, the reason we're having this SMA discussion, the major SMAs, they all are required now, any construction to come to us with regards to that. Now, we did get a notification for this se- se- uh, variance to allow five years for this property to stay as a cesspool. This property is not only next to Haki Puku stream at the top of where we're doing our water testing, but it's also, um, you know, in an area that, that, that has, um, commercial activities running through it and it's owned by a corporation that has already houses in the community from outside, from, from Crotch and Lions all the way down to Waikana. Um, so, you know, the, the accountability towards corporations that bring large numbers of people and their wastes to our Aha Pua's in the areas to our neighborhood board region. Um, should be held at a really low, high level of accountability, especially with all these discussions going on right now about changing over some from cesspool to septic tanks. Um, or septic systems rather. Uh, so, you know, I, I really, I'm upset to have not been able to comment during the comment period. I am upset that Kahalu Neighborhood Board never got to address uh, an issue like this that obviously after tonight's meeting shows that it's so important to our community. Um, and also I feel that you know, individuals are being asked to switch over, individuals are being offered money to switch over. It's being highly encouraged. We need to hold accountable corporations and multiple property owners with multiple cesspools, you know, especially in an area where, uh, no other wastewater management systems exist. So, you know, my, I want, so, you know, Amy was talking about the resolutions being broad in general. Um, I don't know how to approach this situation where I want to say, hey, we need more time and we urge DOH to, you know, granted, I'm not putting words in anybody else's mouth. We need more time to discuss it in the sunshine and be able to say, um, that we urge you to not allow such a variance to happen with a property that's so close to, um, the stream and above a spring and where all these high bacteria counts are being found. But in general, you know, I want to ask if we should make a resolution towards having the Department of Health and other departments, you know, DPP already has that up for the SMA, but uh, relating to wastewater management and to this kind of construction and, and, um, switching over in a way that allows us to comment on it as well as support any needs of individuals who are truly trying to make it happen. You know, but here we have a corporation that is skirting it. And the pictures that I sent you, Chair, the other day, or just today, uh, are for another property across the street that appears to be a giant cesspool being replaced there. We've gotten no mention of that coming from DOH. Don't know if there's any permits even for that at 49-dash-two-zero-five. And the, the hoptoes are still there. Um, one of the two cans was, was buried already, but, you know, it makes me a- ask further that this property owner seemed apparently also, um, is shirking their responsibilities over and over back to 2020 when I was arrested over this issue here on Johnson Road where cess- cesspools were being drained into the ocean directly through an awai that ran down through the property Makai of our house. So same property owner over and over, trying to shirk and avoid responsibilities towards the state goal of reaching, um, you know, of getting rid of cesspools, changing your septic tanks by 50/50. You know, it is the one giant corporation in our Aha Pua of Haki Puku and Koala. So, you know, how do we get that kind of transparency, accountability and, and higher level of responsibility from, you know, uh, a, a corporation that brings thousands of visitors to the area and hundreds of employees daily in, in the region? You know, so.
Okay.
At this time, that household is not, uh, being utilized for corporate activities. But it is in a place that could easily handle that. And so what is this variance? If we, DOE approves this variance, what are we looking at? With the ability in five years to ask for another variance? Um, our stream water that feeds our taro patches are at risk and people have gotten sick because of it. So we need the clean water and we need it now. Forgive my speech.
Uh, butcher?
So Ian, are you wanting our, our resolution just to get us more time for these things? Is that, that's kind of what it sounds like? Get us more time, be able to take action.
I am. And, and sort of, I mean, perhaps a resolution should be stronger in laying. And, and sort of, I mean, perhaps a resolution should be stronger in language to request direct, um, in a similar manner to DPP's. Like here, we don't have a major SMA, but we are dealing with a wastewater management system. So how do we better get to address this and know whether when I'm looking up the street, there's a permit for this big hole in the ground that, you know.
Do you have something wrapped for us? Like just something that we could go over? Cause you know, when we discussed talking in the sunshine, unfortunately, we only meet once a month. Um, do you have like a, just like a, I feel like a two liner would cover it if you're just trying to get us more time to be able to testify. You know, because we could go all day into the details of, of all of the things that we're fighting against. But maybe if you just want to take a moment to consider what are your main, your, I don't know, your main goals here, you want more time for us to testify, right? That sounds like.
Yeah, I have put a draft together, um, that's where I was trying to hold back on, um, on, on the, you know, Amy made a comment about, hey, when things, activities are happening, they should be mentioned regarding to place, but in general, I'm saying whereas, may I? Is now the time to put out that statement or, um, whereas the state of Hawaii has made a goal to switch from cesspools to septic tanks by 2050. Whereas corporations that bring visitors to an area and individuals' multiple properties should be held to a higher level of accountability towards the health of our waters and of Kaniua Bay concerning their responsibility towards meeting the state goals relating to wastewater ma- uh, management system in, um, whereas Kahului Neighborhood Board number 29.
Ian, sorry, one sec.
Sorry, I don't have to read it.
No, 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 you're, you're good, you're good, brother. Throw that in the chat so that, um, the kind, Rachel can just copy paste that and then we can, um, we can look at it and then we can start moving on that. Because I agree with you, I call it that because we, I, I'm in support of, of high level results that, that are asking for more transparency and more uh, public input time because this is one of the collateral damages that's happening as a result of the cesspool conversion thing, right? And it's one of the, and it's one of the many things that's going to happen as it's a mandate for everyone in the state in the next 25 years, right? I mean, it's, it's insane and it doesn't even scrape the surface as far as EV, right? I mean, like we never even touched EV issues yet, we're just on water issues, right? But as it's, as it's a mandate, as, as it's gonna happen and as priority zones are coastline where EV are, um, this is going to be hands down one of the toughest battles state that the state has ever pursued, right? As we also pursue food security and as we also, you know, try and secure, um, you know, the rail and all this other kind of stuff, right, that we're trying to pursue state and citywide. Um, we set our dashes tasks and deadlines for us to do some pretty amazing things, right? Like renewable energy and cesspool conversions, um, which are not quick processes or cheap processes. Um, so, um, I'm, I'm, I'm in full support of, of putting out a resol that, that's going to be high level to, to ask for that input time because I think that the most unfeasible thing apart, that's a part of the mandate is not the conversion, but the timeline that's been placed on the conversion and the expectations upon community members to privately and personally fund these things with the minimal state funding that's been allocated towards grants for the DOH and, um, and other entities, right? Because you cannot assume that only individuals and residents are on cesspools, right? There are definitely businesses, there are definitely industries that are on cesspools, maybe not as prevalent, but it exists. There's not zero, right? So I'm in support of working with that. Um, if you can drop that language in the chat, then we can start moving on that.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, easy. Any other questions? Discussion? Okay, I do want to make note, we do have 25 minutes left with Rachel, so let's get this moving. Um, if we can move on to, uh, board business, C, discussion motion on the proposed Kahului Nature Sanctuary for TMK 147001-002. Um, what, Vice Chair?
I move that we pass the resolution as amended and if Rachel could read the newly amended resolution for board members to, um, it's the only one to consider.
Give a second. Okay, we got, uh, motion by, uh, Vice Chair, uh, second by a member, um, Rapun. This is for C. Oh, sorry, we just did the discussion motion on the, okay, I'm sorry. So we did see, done, so now we're on D, right? And then the, the motion was for D, the motion, the second was for D.
Okay, um, is it okay if I have the board members like do their motion of what they want to put in the resolution? Or, or, read it as is, someone will move that, yeah, okay. Oh, I can show on the screen too? Oh.
Yeah, we have to see it.
And then there's a hard copy. The hard copy was. Can everybody see the resolution online?
Can you just zoom in a little bit, Rach?
Let me find this zoom. Oh, I. Oh, okay. Oh, here, there we go. Okay. Okay, okay, so. Are you feeling the whole thing? Okay. Resolution in support of protection against development and community stewardship for Puuma Elieli. Whereas Puuma Elieli is a significant hill in Kahului Uko Olau Poko Oahu. And whereas Puuma Elieli's significance is demonstrated by its presence in several mo'olalo involving significant akua, including hina and komapua'a. And whereas Puuma Elieli's significance is archaeologically documented by the presence of several heau. And whereas Puuma Elieli is part of a traditional cultural landscape that encompasses several ahupua and contains many cultural sites, including several heau such as Kaua Po'a Halei. On top, the ridge and mentioned in sites of Oahu sterling in summers 1978 and important in several Hawaiian mo'olalo thus should be preserved in alignment with the conservation and preservation state and city zoning designation, designation, oh, so sorry, designations that this mountain ridge now holds. Whereas Puuma Elieli is recognized by the community as a significant space as demonstrated by the many pieces of testimony submitted to the Legacy Land Conservation Commission Meeting Number 88. And whereas natural spaces are significant resources for native plant and bird species. And whereas Puuma Elieli is steep and unfit for development for agricultural or housing purposes. And whereas any development of this property is in direct conflict to the rural and agricultural nature of Kahului'u. And whereas the Kahului'u Neighborhood Board seeks to maintain the city and state's current conservation and or preservation zoning. Therefore, be it resolved that the Kahului'u Neighborhood Board Number 29 supports the community grounded stewardship plans for Puuma Elieli to preserve the natural and undeveloped nature of this property through the appropriate city and county of Honolulu and state of Hawaii departments.
Mahalo, we got that motion, we got it moved and seconded. Any discussion, Uncle Rick?
Could, could we replace in the first whereas it says Puuma Elieli is a hill? Because it's other for, uh, otherwise referred to as a ridge, so exchange, um, hill for ridge.
Yeah. Yeah, I should.
Mahalo, Mahalo, for that note, Uncle Rick, any other discussion amendments to the language?
Okay, Rachel, um, just catch my own spelling error, there's no okina in front of ua in Kaua Po'a Halei. So, uh, the, I, I spelled it correctly in the bottom chat there. Where I said I spelled Kaua Po'a Halei wrong, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, mahalo. Um. Okay. As the language stands, the motion, the second stands on it, we're going to take roll call.
Okay, so the motion is um, supporting the resolution in support of protection against development and community stewardship for Puuma Elieli. All in favor, I'm going to do the roll call actually, sorry. Bender? Yes, okay. And then, Iggy? Yes? Jardine? It is here, okay. Kalihiva? Yes? The Vassar?
Aye.
Yes? Lou? Aye. Arthur? Let me just double check. Oh, Arthur's there. Arthur? Yes, for the support of the resolution? Thumbs up?
Yes.
Thumbs up? What's up, Johnny? Thumbs up.
Oh, sorry, I tried for unmuted his microphone, so, okay, just tell them thumbs up or down for the resolution resulting on the resolution. Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. And then Kiony?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, Masterson?
Yes.
Yes. Kanai? Yes, yes. Rapun? Cole? Spencer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mahalo.
Is everybody in favor? Thank you.
Mahalo. So we're going to go ahead and, uh, because of that, because we took language from the other, uh, resol, we're going to go ahead and defer E on board business indefinitely. So that one's done. And then, um, for F, I'm going to defer that till next agenda. Um, I do want to make note, yeah, um, uh, for Mr. Sippin and, uh, Mark, who was online previously. If you would like to, uh, get this moving, um, we do recommend that you do come to the board, um, in person in the March agenda. Uh, keep that out, uh, keep an eye out for that agenda posting and then, um, uh, yeah, go ahead, member.
I'd just like to remind, uh, Mark and Mr. Sippin that it's not the job of the board to investigate your permit. It's your job to present to us and present your case, uh, whether it's fit for the community or not. Mahalo.
Mahalane. Um, okay. Yeah, I think you can stop, Chair. So that concludes board business. We have sub district reports, uh, sub district, I'm sorry, Uncle Rick?
I, I just wanted to make a motion, I don't know where this would happen, but, um, I've noticed throughout the evening that only four out of 25 of the participants on Zoom have, um, live camera going. And I, I just think it's, um, it's not fair to the rest of us who come every month. And, and you're just looking, you're talking to a name. So I think, um, I would just make a motion that if you're gonna, if you're gonna join on Zoom, then you have to have your video on the entire time.
When, so we have, the, the discussion right now is, you know, we'd like to have, um, just cameras on, um, but we're not, you know, we're not too sure how we can enforce you having your camera on all the time. Um, but at least when you folks testify or when anyone testifies online, um, we would like to request that cameras do go on. Um, I'm not sure if we do need a motion for that, do we need a motion for that? Yeah, so I'd like to go ahead and institute that. If you're going to give testimony, um, or at least speak on camera, uh, or at least speak, um, then just please have your camera on. If you would like, um, an accommodation request, you know, um, my, my email is available, is available on public. So feel free to reach out to me as the chair and I can go ahead and, uh, grant you that accommodation and make the board, uh, aware of that prior to starting the next meeting. Uh, Uncle Ken?
Uh, well, quick comment, um, you have the Kahului Neighborhood Board view and then you have Rachel listed separately. And so there is redundancy, so we need to look at some of that and like Olelo virtual. There are some names that we might have a problem. We need to understand which cameras are able to be operated and from there. But I agree with what Rick said, I agree.
Yeah, of course, yeah, like the IT stuff, like, yeah, like Rachel and Olelo, like, of course, that's our IT guys here. And so we, we can make note of that, we can, you know, modify the names prior to starting the meeting if we need to, but mahalo. Uncle John?
Is there a way where on the screen, you can, you can see, you can see the neighborhood board members who are present at all times? Because I'm glancing up there, I have no idea if, if certain people are there or not. There's just way too many boxes up there.
Oh.
Well, so short of that, every board member should have their, their camera on. Yeah, every board member, throughout, throughout. I'm sorry, if they've got a run to the loo or whatever, they can turn off their camera for the moment, but every board member's face should be visible. Uh, Rachel?
Okay, um, so the item isn't listed on the agenda, so we can't really change it right now. But there is a rule about when we're going through board business, it is, uh, suggested to have all the board members have their cameras on just to be sure that it's them. Um, it has to be at least the quorum amount, because sometimes I know there's issues with turning on the camera. So I just want to point that out, thank you.
Yeah, quick, um, balo, um, yeah, I know, I know, I understand the intent behind it. Um, I also under- understand the intent behind cutting the camera on a, on a three hour meeting, right? Um, it does seem a little bit much to be watching you for three hours while you just participate in the meeting. But, um, but yeah, but if you're a board member, um, and we are participating as a board member, um, it, it, it would be nice. And, and we appreciate those who do, right? So Ian?
Oh, just that there may be language in that during the COVID time because, um, I know this issue came up when we first joined the board two, two and a half years ago. So, um, the language in the minutes.
Mahalo, what it will really come down to is the purpose of the chair. So board members and community, when chair says turn on your camera, then that's the way it goes. Otherwise, we just mute you and you don't get to speak, unfortunately, which we want everyone to speak. So it's going to be up to Chair what he decides.
Yeah. I like seeing all you guys' pretty faces, but also sometimes we, we might have to ask you guys to cut off the cameras too, so be aware, we can do that as well, so.
I have something to say about that.
Yeah.
We're all here present, we're all members because we want it to be. And you know, I, I, I would say, you know, courtesy, I would like to see our board members who's on, who's, who's with us. If you said like, just, I'm seeing all these blocks over here, I only see names. And it, it, it's kind of, you know, does get to you sometimes.
Yeah.
Mahalo.
Uh, I understand, mahalanti rocky. And I, and I do understand, right, for, for folks like, you know, Uncle Art, um, and Uncle Ken and Ian, right? All you folks who, who notoriously take these from online, um, they're meant, online is intended for, to be used, right? I'd rather have online and see people online than see us with no one participating online, right? Um, but their participation is welcome, whether online, um, it, online or in person, better than none, right? Say at least, as, as long as we have quorum to get things done as a board, um, I support it. But yeah, when, when we're testifying, let's, let's just give cameras on. Uh, Ian, one last thing.
Maybe Rachel can pin us, the board members, so that we come up to the top of that during our meetings as well, you know? And keep our cameras on unless we're going to run to the restroom or whatever. Yeah, but.
Yeah, mahalo.
I think we need a standing rule that says that anybody making a presentation to the board about a permit has to be here in person. And that has to be, Rachel, that should be on our minutes.
Yeah, we do have a, we have a header on the agenda that says rules of speaking. So we can go ahead and take a look at that, potentially amend the language there, um, and then put that on the agenda for the next, um, meeting to take a vote. Um.
So that's a two thirds of, that's like a standing rule, so it's got to be not just a majority.
Yeah. So for, um, we're good, yeah, we're good. Um, so yeah, we're deferring F, sub district reports, sub district one. Sub district two. Sub district three.
I went to a hearing and, um, the Department of Land and Natural Resources, and just so that the community know that, um, they did give the permit to, um, Halau Ko.
Halau Nohana Hawaii.
Um, no, yeah, but there is a, a group from Virginia, the state of Virginia.
Aye.
All of the board members are from the state of Virginia. You know, and I, I, I thought it was an insult to, to us from Hawaii that the DIA now give it to somebody from the state of Virginia. Actually, there were just four of us testifying and I didn't realize it said our testa, our debate lasted 90 minutes.
Would you like it agendized on the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, put it on the agenda, mahalo.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we can elaborate more on that in March. Um, okay, sub district four, Uncle Ken? Um, yeah, we can elaborate more on that in March. Um, okay, Sub District Four, Uncle Ken?
Uh, I'm aware of.
Oh, no, we just got our road re-struck. Ahui Manu Road is bright and yellow. I know, I drove up after work today. I I thought I was seeing things. I thought it was fresh rain. No, it's fresh yellow paint. So, you know, hopefully it stays nice and fresh and yellow.
Thank you.
I know, I know, we may not have sidewalks, but at least we get in line in the middle of the road. Yeah, that's okay. We take that. We'll take that. Yeah, we know what side of the road we on. We know if you go Castle or Kohuku, no. Uh, okay, Sub District Five.
Nothing from Five.
Nothing from Five, anything from Six? Not nobody from Six, cap? Uh, okay, announcements. We have elections coming up, right? Please, uh if you wanna go ahead and participate, uh submit that registration form by Feb twenty one at four thirty. Um you can do that in person or you can do that online. If you do it in person, please submit it to the Neighborhood Commission Office um on Dillingham, yeah, right across uh Costco. And the Bank of Hawaii on the corner right there. Um the form is at that link, the twenty twenty five voter farm is gonna be at that link there on the agenda. And then we have the twenty twenty five candidacy candidacy declaration form verification. That's just to verify, you know, where you live. Um it's gonna be at that. Uh we have the next regular board meeting scheduled for next month, March twelve, Wednesday. Um and that's gonna be six o'clock here, Key Project. Um any questions, concerns? Um, online Ian?
Sorry, one last announcement for Sub District One. Uh watch out before the next board meeting, we will have the fiftieth birthday of Hokulea at Koala Regional Park for. The Kanu Va'ah celebration that happens there, I believe, the first week of March. So just wanted to put that announcement out there and encourage everyone to come down and celebrate. It will be at the weekend at the Boy Scout Camp down at the back of the regional park.
Mahalo Ian, and we do have one announcement for community.
Aloha, um so now I have my Key Project hat on. We have a bunch of different things that are coming up before the next board meeting. One of them is on Friday. Uh Mariah Miner, who's over here, neighborhood resident. She is leading our Nohona Hawaii program right now and she is going to be making lay for. The Hokulea fiftieth birthday on Friday, March seventh here at Key Project, so come to both. And then Ian, you guys get flyer for the Hokulea birthday, because I've never seen one yet. Like, we're going, the boat's there. We're gonna be there.
Yeah, I guess I had the week along too. Um so I don't have it as of yet. I'll check my PBS um mailer and see if it came with that, but I'm just aware that there's a lot of planning going on. So anything we can do to support our our flagship would be awesome.
Um some other quick Key Project announcements, we do also have an open position for the Kuna Coordinator. So if you folks know people who would be good for that, that would be great. We have a youth program over spring break. We're recruiting fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth graders for that. So um we have a flyer up here. We also have. A Hallow Fest coming up March twenty second, uh again flyer up there. That's gonna be the morning, big event. And next week, Thursday, we're gonna have a really cool panel discussion on Ola Hoba'i and Aina. Food is gonna be provided. Bring your farm friends, NRCS is or ORCD is organizing a farm resource fair. That's next Thursday and then a panel discussion. It's gonna be really cool. I'd love to talk about it more, but it's late, so I'll be out in the park.
All right, Mahalo Joel. Any other announcements from community members, board members, online? Okay, Mahalo, you guys were a turn.